Good evening, councillors. I now open the ordinary council meeting on the 28th of March 2023 at 7:07pm. I would like to begin the meeting by asking councillor Chapel to read the acknowledgement.
I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidgegal and Gadigal peoples who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to their elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Thank you. And councillor Hay to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly bestow you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people, the city of Randwick and Australia.
Thank you very much, councillors. Please be seated. Before I move to the calling of apologies and granting of leaves of absence, I have a brief statement to make. The first is a thank you and a recognition of the service of our director of city planning, Mr Kiriaku, who for the last several months has been acting in the role of acting general manager. And I would like to pay my, my deep thanks for all of the council, the support, the administrative nous as well and throughout that period of transition for council. And I have to say, having witnessed a range of acting arrangements, it was definitely a steady hand from beginning until its conclusion last week. And so on behalf of all of council and the community, I'd like to really express our thanks for your acting over that period. Thank you. The second thing which I'd like to say is to give a very warm and heartfelt welcome to, for some, a new face, for some, a friendly, familiar face, returning to Randwick City Council as newly appointed general manager, who we have poached after having lost Mr Brownley from Randwick to go to Northern Beaches to see his return after several years up at the podium. And I'd like to, on behalf of the councillors and in the entire community, to wish you a very, a very warm welcome and a, a, a thank you for all of the work that you have already put in, only having started last, the last two days. But realistically, having been at council every week, multiple times a week and being in contact with all of us councillors and making sure that we're able to hit the ground running in that interim period. So a very warm and heartfelt welcome to Mr Ray Brownley. Thank you. An active disorder from councillor D'Souza, but I will allow it in this instance. Thank you. I will now move in, yes councillor Hammond. Okay, thank you. Thank you councillors. I hope we're all on our best behaviour this evening. I will now call for apologies and leaves of absence. We've got a full house tonight, so there being no apologies or leaves of absence. There being no requests to attend the meeting by audiovisual link, that is no longer required. Can I please have somebody move? We move on to the confirmation of the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the minutes of the 28th of February 2023? Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Sedd. All those in favour? All those against? Declare those carried. Can I please have somebody move the minutes of the extraordinary meeting on the 7th of March 2023? Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Luxford. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Councillors, we now move on to declarations of, yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the inside front cover, and it might have been this way last few meetings, I'm not sure. It does indicate that councillor Chapel is the deputy mayor, and in fact councillor Pandafini is the deputy mayor. And I just would like to see that that's changed in respect to the position that she now holds.
Thank you very much, councillor Hamilton. I will refer that to the relevant officers for future meetings. Thank you. Councillors, do we have any declarations of interest? Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, both CP323 and CP423, it's basically the same issue. I own a unit in close proximity to both these addresses and hence have a pecuniary interest and won't debate or vote.
Thank you. What I will do is I will then go to councillor Olive, then councillor D'Souza. Councillor Olive.
Yes, just for the CC123 Community Investment Programme. Just that I know one of the recipients of the Community Creative Grant and for Wiley's, he's a Greens member, yeah. But a non-pecuniary, non-significant interest.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza.
I wish to declare a pecuniary interest in item CS723, draft Matriville Public Domain Master Plan and public exhibition outcomes. As owner of property in the Matriville Town Centre, I will be taking no part in the debate or voting on the matter. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you councillor Hamilton.
A non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in CP523 on the confidential paper for councillor Hay and myself, as we are acquainted with one of the directors, Geraldine Hoban, through our political affiliations.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? Councillor H.
I would just like to declare a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in MM1023, as the speaker is known to me. And also in relation to the CC1/23, as one of the recipients is also known to me through my political affiliations, but I will be voting on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, in relation to the supplementary confidential staff report, which, the number of which I actually don't have in front of me, thank you. Thank you. CP623, I declare a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest as one, as a tenant may be a, maybe a member of the Labour Party in an adjacent component of that property. Thank you. And is that on behalf of all Labour members? No? Councillor Nielsen? Yep, that's fine. Councillor Nielsen?
Declaration in non-pecuniary, but I guess significant in relation to CP323, the public notification of the voluntary planning agreement and the CP43, public notification of a member of the delegate on the Sydney Planning Panel. So need to excuse myself, so I will be, and then at the moment, that's it. Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Sedd.
Can I ask a question? I remember this happened once before. We have, I think, three delegates, alternate delegates and two delegates. These have all been, I just checked with the council officer, have all been approved. So whether you're on the panel or not has no effect whatsoever. Just want to confirm, otherwise we'll have to declare.
I will through either to the general manager or the director of city planning for advice?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, councillor Sedd is, is correct. These applications have been determined and the matters arising from the planning agreement are not matters that will have to be dealt with by the planning panel.
Have clarification, so there's no need to state anything, but what about if we vote no?
Through to the director of city planning?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is not a developer application, so it's not a matter for the planning panel. If there were to be applications in the future made by this applicant for this development, then councils would need to consider their position in relation to those in the future.
Yep, thank you. Councillors, there being no further declarations, we'll move on. Just a reminder that if at any point during the meeting, a declaration or the need to feel, that, at any point during the meeting, if you feel the need to make a declaration, please sing out and I will happily take it. Okay, thank you. We now move to addresses of council by members of the public. I will read to the meeting the chairperson's announcement, privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 520 to 523 of the council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recording of meeting is prohibited without the express permission of council. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council. I'll now move to announcement of speakers. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put forward their case with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped at the four-minute mark. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission. Members of the public are under no obligation to answer those questions if they do not feel the need. Our first speaker this evening relates to MM8/23 Artificial Reef Sydney Dive Rec, speaking against Ms Rona Wade representing the Coogee precinct.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposal for the rec, dive rec of Coogee. The Coogee Bay precinct has not had an opportunity to discuss the merrill minute at this stage. Thought I should make that clear. I note that the advocates of this proposal list the benefits apart from provision of diving opportunities as being income generation for business, creation of vibrant village atmosphere and provision of world-class ecosystem. It's implied that the business generated will be for local businesses. However, elsewhere, the proponents state that most visitation will be by boats coming from Sydney Harbour. So on this basis, it's hard to see many local businesses benefiting except for the dive companies. As to creating a vibrant village atmosphere, I'm sure you'd all agree, Coogee already has a bustling and vibrant village atmosphere acknowledged by residents and visitors alike. And then with respect to the provision of a world-class ecosystem, it should be noted that the 12 supporting organisations listed are all dive or dive-related. There are no organisation, environmental organisations listed, nor those of other environmentally engaged users of the Coogee Ocean Area, such as ocean swimmers or the surfing community. Even the Surf Life Saving Association or the Coogee Surf Club are not listed. But most importantly of all, no marine research organisation, such as the Sydney Maritime Museum or any of the universities are listed as supporting this project. And this is a highly significant omission and that one that gives rise to very real concerns about the environmental credentials of this proposal. Like all beach areas, Coogee is being increasingly impacted by heavier seas and more frequent storms. And the wreck, the naval wreck sunk off of Okah Beach broke up in 2015 storm and a 10-by-8 metre piece of metal broke away and disappeared. Again, in the 2016 storm, another section broke free. So what's to stop similar things happening here and what is to stop such material being deposited on our iconic Wedding Cake Island or coming ashore, worse, still coming ashore? Finally, there's a huge cost of $5 to $10 million. The website states this is to be funded by the state government, but is it? I, I can't recall seeing it as an election promise. And given the widespread economic hardship being experienced in the state and the urgent priorities faced by the new government, funding a dive opportunity off the eastern suburbs would not be a good look. It should also be noted that the 2 to 5 million, sorry, 5 to 10 million is just a start. And the Okah sunken wreck site has subsequently cost the state money dearly for subsequent works and repairs. So I urge council to seriously reconsider its support for this proposal until the Coogee precinct has been consulted. But most importantly, before, until an independent environmental impact study has been completed. And just a final word, if council's going to make an effort with respect to the Coogee Ocean Area, can I make a bid that council approach the new Labour government to pick up where it left off in 2011 and complete the aquatic marine reserve across to Wiley's? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no question to the speaker, thank you, Ms Wade. I now call speaking in favour of MM8/23, Mr Matthew Kempton.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name's Matthew Kempton. I represent the Gordon's Bay Scuba Diving Club. I might, I assume you've read the motion that we're seeking to get the council to write a letter of support for the proposal that we're putting forward to create an artificial reef about four kilometres off the coast of Coogee. Just to address a couple of the concerns that were raised, I mean specifically about the HMS Adelaide. There are a number of dive wrecks, ex navy ships that have been scuttled around the country. HMS Brisbane up in Maloolabah, HMS Canberra down in Melbourne, HMS Swan off Duncebra, HMS Hobart off Adelaide, all of which have generated, successfully generated ongoing income and not created any environmental impact and in fact have improved the environment from a marine perspective as far as attracting marine life to that, those particular wrecks. But also as a result of that, attracting additional marine life to adjacent existing reefs. So just on that point, so we have looked at that and that's part of the consideration. Also, as far as the environment is concerned, we do actually have some support from the University of New South Wales. Professor Ian Struthers, who's an environmental scientist, and he has written a letter of support for the, for the wreck. I don't know if people have seen the business proposal itself, but it is quite extensive and it does cover all these environmental issues. It covers issues about the economic cost, about the ongoing cost as well. That's been taken into consideration based on those wrecks that have existed around the country, ranged from the sort of 20-plus years that have been in place already. So the, as far as the HMS Adelaide specifically is concerned, yes, there have been some storm issues there. We don't propose to, part of the business proposal is to get an environmental impact study done before the actual, this is approved. All we're seeking from council at this point is a, a letter of support to continue forward with this. We've got 14,000 signatures in support of the, of the actual, of the proposal. And also as far as the Coogee precinct is concerned, my understanding is that John Rowe, who was an ex-president of the Gordon's Bay Scuba Club, did present to the Coogee precinct some time ago and, five years ago, and, and, and didn't get any concerns raised at that point. This has been, as far as the funding of it goes, it is absolutely based on getting that funding from the state and federal governments, not from, not from the council. So that's sort of in summary of what I'm, the information I can provide you at this point. But I'm happy to obviously take any questions that you might have of clarification.
Thank you very much. I will go to councillor Hamilton first with a question, then councillor Pandafini.
Thank you, Mr Kempton. Can I just ask you a question in relation to the input or the interest and joint partnership with Science?
Yes.
Sydney Institute of Marine Science, SIMS. Is it true that they, joint marine science faculties of UNSW, Sydney University in Macquarie, University in UTS, fully endorse this proposal and they have been in partnership in working through any of the environmental challenges?
I, I can't give you a direct answer, yes to that, but if you have the answer there, then I'm happy to go with that, so.
Okay. Apparently your business plan, pages 27 to 28.
Yeah, it's, it's an extensive business plan. I haven't got it all up here, but.
No, that's okay. I'm just, just thinking about the comments of previous speaker, just ensuring that there is a connection between the initiative that you're proposing and science and the science faculties across several universities.
Yeah, I mean, I might, might make a point too on that, that there is support, not just from the scientific community, but across all different parts of the community. And it's not just the diving community either. As far as this goes, it's from different councils, it's from business chambers, it's from politicians of all sides. So there is a, and then of course, there's the 14,000 people that have signed it, a large number of whom come from the Randwick area as well.
Councillor Pandafini, then just before you do, can I just confirm there's a hand up from councillor Chapel and then Olive? Okay, thank you. Councillor Pandafini.
Yeah, thanks again for coming in. And I just wondered, of course, it's important to have support from all areas of the community and the signatures, of course, but there would of course need to be an environmental, you know, report, impact statement. We can't just rely on, you know, support as such. Is that part of the business plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And at what stage would that occur?
That's some, we've got to get the funding from the state government, we've got to get a ship. I mean, realistically, if that all started to flow, we're still talking, it's probably two, maybe more years down the track.
Okay. And so you need the support before having an environmental statement?
Yeah, what, what we're trying to do is to gather as much support as we can so that we can go to the state government with the petition and say, here's the petition, but also there's all this support around moving this forward, understanding that there are certain elements that have to happen before it would happen anyway, like an environmental impact statement.
So just one follow-up question. And is that because it's quite expensive to get the environmental statement or, you know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. I think you've kind of answered some of my question there, which is who will be funding it? So, because it doesn't actually say who the letter of support is to, so I assume that's to the state government?
To the, it's to the Gordon Bay, it's the Scuba Club or the Sydney Dive Rec Organising Committee.
Okay. And, and the particular reason to have this at this stage rather than at a stage where the development is actually proposed and more is known about it is just so to, to further the argument of the state government providing funding to deliver this project?
Yes, that's right. That's, it's an initial step in the process.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Yes, thanks very much for coming. Just, I don't have it in front of me, but I remember in the proposal at the beginning, it talks about a link between the dive wreck and Wedding Cake Island. And can you clarify what that's supposed to mean?
Yeah, what, what that means is, and it's been scientifically established that if you, when you create an artificial reef, what that does, obviously, it attracts marine life to that particular reef. But in addition, it attracts, it creates increased volumes of marine life on adjacent reefs. So that would be the connection to Wedding Cake Island.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to councillor Sedd, then to councillor Nielsen. Councillor Sedd.
Just out of interest, do you actually, when naval ships are put to rest, are they scuttled anyway?
No, no, well, this is another, generally what happens with, when a naval ship is decommissioned, it gets, it either gets sold to another country, like recently there've been some sold to Chile, or they get broken up for scrap metal, or they can get used, and they are regularly used around the world for creating artificial reefs, not necessarily for diving, but to try and increase the marine biomass of a particular area.
Thank, thank you. I will go to councillor Nielsen, then a follow-up from, oh, you're fine? I will go to councillor Olive.
I was just also interested whether you have any letters of support from other councils?
We do have one from Waverley Council. We, we, I'm trying to think now.
You have, you have one from Waverley, or it's the council on there?
Yes. Look, I can't remember specifically. Look, I can't remember specifically, other councils specifically, but it's because our focus is more on this part of the, of Sydney, that we're seeking that. So it, we've got letters of support from politicians in those different electorates, in different electorates around Sydney, but I'm just trying to, but we haven't sought, because they're obviously influential in terms of getting funding, but not from councils.
Just, while slightly unorthodox, I believe the Director of City Services may be able to assist in answering that question.
Thank you through yourself, Mr Mayor. I believe there's letters of support offered from both Waverley Council and Warrington Council.
Thank you.
Through to councillor De Souza. Your question, councillor De Souza.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Sir, thank you, thank you for being with us. I'm just looking at some recent research and it says, it's lately been noted sharks actually prefer shipwrecks over natural reefs. Were you aware of that?
I haven't seen that at all.
Okay.
Sharks prefer, I haven't seen that at all. Look, I mean, it depends what sort of sharks you're talking about, I guess.
Well, actually, sand tiger sharks, they were talked about in particular. But I, I, look, I just wanted to know, were you aware of it? It's here, it's evidence-based, the statement I've made.
Yeah.
I'm sad that you're not aware of it, but in saying that, I wanted others to be aware that shipwrecks attract sharks. Thank you.
There is a point of order from councillor Hamilton?
Yes. I find it, I don't have to at all, not during question time. The councillor De Souza challenging the, and debating with the speaker in pointing out that he has facts and that the speaker doesn't.
Okay. So, okay, so thank you. Just on the point of order. At the beginning of addresses of council by members of the public, members of the public are under no obligation to answer any question if they do not wish to. I also believe that councillor De Souza has finished with his remarks or questioning, and as a result, a rule that we will now move on, and then no point of order. Please, sorry, there is a point of order, but we'll now continue. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, just a further question. I understand the artificial reef will then need a fishing exclusion zone around it?
Correct.
Can you explain a bit more about that?
Yeah, so the fishing exclusion zone would be so that divers and snorkelers can use it without the problem of fishing entanglement. I mentioned, I've mentioned a couple of times that we have spoken the issues and fishes about this and said and explained to them and given them the scientific evidence of that it does increase the marine biomass on adjacent reefs. So at this point, we're actually trying to seek support from them in terms of writing a letter as well. They haven't said they will or won't write one at this point.
I also was at one of the coastal council meetings present, where I believe national parks raised concerns about whale migration and the impact on that.
We, before we get the environmental impact study, we can't sort of determine that. But it certainly, it hasn't seemed to have impacted the ships of the Brisbane off Malolaba, the Tobruk off Bundaberg, the Adelaide off Terragall, don't seem to have impacted that at all.
Just one final question, I promise. I believe when this was originally being canvassed, there was a consideration being given of constructed reef rather than scuttling a ship. And the potential that that reduces the amount of contaminants and stuff in the water. Has that been taken off the table entirely or?
It's been, ideally it's a ship, ideally it's a navy ship because of the attraction that brings for scuba divers coming not just nationally but internationally. So that's an attraction for them. The, we have also considered other sorts of ships, for example, the manly ferries, if and when they, they come out of service, that would be, save them from being scrapped, but also create something for Sydney that they're maintained for. As part of the process of getting those vessels ready for scuttling, they're taken through an extensive decontamination process so that it doesn't pose any environmental issues.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the speaker. You've received a fair few questions and appreciate the way you've handled it.
Thank you.
Councillors, we now move to MM10/23 Zero Childhood Cancer Programme. Speaking in favour, Ms Paulette Barahona.
Sorry, I'm a little bit short. Thank you for allowing me to speak about the Zero Childhood Cancer Programme. My name's Paulette. I'm the Clinical Operations Manager at Zero Position Medicine Programme. Next slide. So this is the journey of our programme. So you can see that the first stage of our Zero Childhood Cancer, I'll abbreviate to ZCC because it is a bit of a mouthful. So ZCC National Position Medicine Programme started in September 2015. We conducted a pilot study at two of our children's, Sydney Children's Hospital, for children with high-risk cancers and less than thirty percent chance of survival. During this study, we reviewed fifty-eight children with high-risk or relapsed cancers. And in September 2017, that was when we opened up our national clinical trial that was launched across all paediatric centres across Australia, focusing on identifying potential new treatment options for children with high-risk cancers. And in recent time now, with our Zero Programme, is now being progressively expanded to, by the end of this year, that will also allow all children and young people, so those that are just born or up to the age of eighteen, to, that have been diagnosed with cancer in Australia, to enter into this trial. Next slide. This is just a quick snapshot of the journey of a child through our programme. So basically what happens is the patient is diagnosed at the hospital. Tumor sample and a blood sample arrives at our institute. We extract DNA and RNA, and then we perform a comprehensive genomic analysis. We then work with specialty scientists and clinicians, try and see if we can identify what's driving these cancers to potentially identify therapeutic options for the children. This then goes into a multidisciplinary tumor board where we discuss these patients. And there we present forward these findings to the treating clinician so that they can then refine or potentially alter their patient's clinical management. Next slide. This is just our collaboration map, so it's just indicating all of our nine paediatric centres across Australia. And as well as twenty-two, a little bit more now, but around twenty-two national and international collaborators that we're interacting with. So you can see that we've actually been very well recognised internationally as well as within Australia. Next slide. This is just a quick update of our programme from the beginning of September 2017 till the 31st of December 22. And what you can see is we've got eight hundred and forty-four patients that went through our national trial. Ninety-four percent of these patients had a reportable molecular finding. And of those had seventy-five, seventy-five percent had a potential therapeutic recommendation. So these are patients that have had, exhausted all options, and so they're coming through our programme to see if we potentially might have another option for them. And what we also identified, that fifteen percent of our cohort actually have an inheritable cancer predisposition, germ line mutation. So again, we can start looking at clinically managing that family and that child differently as well. So yeah, just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what we do, but they're just contact details. We do do tours within the institute, so I'd love to take you through our programme, show you what we do, and just, you know, get you exposed to the wonderful programme that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There's a question from councillor Veach.
Thanks very much for coming in. How many kids or young people do you expect to sort of expand it to now that it's going nationally?
So we're looking at about a thousand per year coming through our programme. So this is non-high risk as well as our high-risk programme. So yeah, we're going from around, we start off with a hundred per year, so we're going to a thousand per year. That's why we're expanding progressively, so that we can just get all those sites across all our states and territories.
Thank you. Are there any, councillor Sedd?
Thank you for coming in and you're to be commended for what you do, but sorry, I just couldn't see the writing.
Oh, that's all right.
There is one at Westmead, is there one at Remo?
Absolutely, yes. So we started, so yeah, the two national, sorry, the two pilot studies was with Randwick Children's Hospital and Westmead's Children's Hospital. And that's basically to try and see if we could prove that we could do this at a bigger scale. And that was when, in 2017, we then expanded it out to the eight paediatric centres across Australia. We now have nine. So yeah, it started off in Randwick initially.
Thank you. There being no further questions. Thank you very much. In light of the fact that we are powering through the agenda, and what I might do is we will begin the meeting with merrill minutes, urgent business, and then we will take a break after urgent business, just by virtue of the fact that addresses of the public are now done. The first item in the agenda, MM8/23 Artificial Sydney Dive Wreck, is merrill minute. Just before we do, yes, councillor Sedd?
Yes. Oh, the usual comment, Mr Mayor, if you inform the people who spoke, that we won't be doing their motions till probably around ten o'clock or something like that, so there's no.
Yeah, so, so of the, of the three speakers, of the two, yeah, of the three speakers relate to MM8/23 and MM10/23. So we will be dealing with those items. Once we've done with those, you are free to leave, if you so, you're free to leave now if you so wish, but it's a matter for you, you can observe the debate. MM8/23 Sydney Dive Wreck. Councillors, I take it that you have all read the merrill minute? I also draw your attention to the correspondence which I circulated amongst councillors, I believe, about three or four weeks ago, seeking your input in relation to a request that I have received in relation to Randwick Council's position of support of the Sydney Dive Wreck. I would like to thank councillors who had expressed some views and as a result have have given me, provided me the feedback that I think it is appropriate to bring the merrill minute to councils so that we actually are able to come to a decision on this particular matter, in light of the fact that there's a diversity of views. From a personal perspective, I look forward to hearing the debate and the interests of it. I do not have, on a personal level, particularly strong views of it, but I do appreciate the input from the relevant clubs in relation to it. And on face value, I'm more than welcome, more than willing to bring this particular merrill minute to the floor for consideration. With that, I commend the merrill minute and throw it to the floor. Councillors, do I have any speakers? Councillor Olive.
Yes, I won't be supporting this merrill minute because I think there are too many uncertainties. I think it has been pointed out by council staff that there's no economic case for Coogee at all here. So there's no economic benefit for Coogee at all. I think we've heard from local residents, so local residents, they haven't heard about this at all and, you know, sort of might be horrified that, you know, council are supporting this motion without actually having, having a chance to debate it. And I think that, you know, some of the ecological concerns valid, the idea of we have, you know, migrating whales that go up the coast here, and, you know, sort of that's a grand sight. So, you know, so we don't know how this might impact on that. If we have flotillas of boats going out, how will that impact on, you know, sort of the visual pollution? As far as, you know, sort of looking out to, looking out to sea, how will that impact on, you know, sort of visitors to, by boat to Coogee? Will there be, you know, sort of people just deciding to come for day trips and just parking themselves, you know, sort of on Wedding Cake Island? I think that these are all unknowns, that, you know, sort of, that should give us pause for thought, and so I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Councillor Nielsen.
Oh, Mr Mayor. I think it's, I'm totally opposed to this merrill minute, and I think it's imperative that fellow councillors, that Randwick Council record our opposition to any perceived endorsement of this proposal. We must do it now at this council meeting, so there is no, not a perception that council can be persuaded that it is a worthy proposal for Randwick City Council and Coogee. We are well aware of the many environmental issues, or should I say hazards, that are associated with such proposal. It would swamp the stormwater problems we currently face and confuse the proposed solutions that the recently engaged consultant team has put forward to council office and will be very soon put out to the public. This proposal only confuses the solution. No cost, will we know what authority will bear? All the cleanup costs should be there, any incidents whatsoever. And not to mention the land-based support infrastructure required. Poor little Gordon's Bay would be decimated by the necessarily launching facilities. Sydney Dive Wreck website states in respect to the proposed Coogee location, very little scuba diving activity occurs at this proposed location because of the sandy bottom. However, a sandy bottom is perfect site to sink a dive wreck. But we know the Canberra wreck was placed on sand and failed to settle as planned, you wouldn't be surprised, I'm sure, because obviously you get a bit of a wave and a bit of an ocean, and the whole thing is a botched job. I would hope you see, all of you see fit to oppose to intentionally sinking a ship at this or any other location. Coogee has enough issues with stormwater pollution, without scuttling navy ships, and any federal support would be better directed to improving water quality, not disposing of retired navy vessels. And I haven't addressed the so-called benefits via the economic strategy. I am totally opposed to this proposal. It has been discussed many times over the years by members of the Coogee precinct. I was at the meeting where Mr Rowe presented, and he didn't get it particularly. People were just listening to what he said, and I can testify that because I was at the meeting myself. There was no enthusiasm for it, even though he brought some friends along. A report obviously would definitely have to be prepared, but why would we waste the money? The cost of the environmental report would be huge, and I can guarantee that we'll get far more people opposing this plan than supporting it. Councillors, let's just put an end to this right now, so we don't endorse it. Other people might endorse it from other areas, and whoever is going to make a decision about this, who's got all the money and so on, can think about it further. But we should very strongly say here tonight that Randwick Council does not endorse this proposal. I urge you all to support this, and this is what I'm putting forward to you as my motion in response to the mayor's merrill minute.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, I think writing a letter of support in, for a proposal that we haven't fully digested for where an EIS is not available, and where we don't understand a lot of what the implications will be for the area, I think is premature and we really shouldn't be doing it. We haven't spoken to our community about it. Not everything that increases numbers or biomass of marine species in an area is a good thing. Our ocean outfalls are a really good example of where there's a lot of biomass in the ocean, but it's not diverse. It's not sustainable. It's just red mullet and sharks eating them. You know, I just think if we want to do this, we need to actually see the detail. We need to see what's being proposed. We need to see what's happening with the whales, and we need to actually talk to our community before we say, yeah, let's go.
Thank you councillor, councillor Hamilton. Sorry, thank you councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do support your merrill minute, and I think that this issue, this particular initiative has been around for a very long time. A lot of the committee do know about it, the precinct committee do know about it. And the fact that they may not have said anything overly supportive, they certainly didn't voice their main concerns back then, it was, and has been discussed about at nearly every single community event. There's been stalls that have been put together by the Gordon's Bay Scuba Diving Club. They have consistently put together lists of names in support. And we've heard also from Mr Compton about the support from various politicians over the years. The navy themselves would do everything they possibly could to ensure that it was void of, we don't use lead paint in Australia, so I don't think there's any concerns there. We don't use asbestos in our lagging on ships anymore. I'm ex navy, I was there twelve years. This would be, for me, I think, a fantastic thing for our area. I think it would be extremely exciting to have a navy ship with a history. We could put a plaque from the promenade where people could read about the history of. put a plaque from the promenade, where people could read about the history of that particular ship, its voyages, its wartime service, and other things that it may have partaken in when it was commissioned, decommissioned, who the captains were. So it would be really another tourist attraction. And the fact that people are saying that that area is not a dive site is, I'm sure there's a lot of divers in the area that would really dispute that. Gordon's Bay, there's a lot of, you know, the buses, they head down there, they're heading down there from the dive shop at Coogee. You know, they're not coming from Western Sydney, and, you know, all of a sudden, the Colavelli car park's full of twenty vans of all these people, not just, not even saying, you know, Western Sydney, anywhere, north, south, anywhere. There are dive locations and opportunities all up and down the coast. And at the moment, we've got Gordon's Bay, and there's, there is a, you know, a great diving little avenue through there, they've got some great little spots to dive through. But to be able to have a second significant location, I think, would be a fantastic thing. The other thing that I heard was, it's not going to bring in tourists or additional people. It will. People will come and stay at the hotels through winter, if they know that there's a fantastic navy ship that they can go and dive at. And it would bring the adventure-type tourists. So at the moment, we've got a lot of tourists from everywhere, they come from all over for different reasons, but to be able to say that we bring adventure-style tourists, tourists that are environmentally conscious, divers don't want to go anywhere and wreck anything, they want to see it in its beauty, its pristine beauty, with the, with all of the, you know, the natural wonders that these opportunities bring. So we'll have a shift in the dynamic of our tourists because of this navy ship.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Olive. Hand up, councillor Olive.
Just a quick clarification, I didn't say, I didn't mean that there would be no economic benefit for somebody, but, you know, it just might be for Randwick. It might be for where they are, where the boats are taking off from, from Sydney Harbour or from, you know, sort of further north, but not here, because we don't have, we don't have any wolves, just here.
Thank you, councillor Sedd.
Mr Mayor, I've just got a couple of questions to the relevant officer. The council water line is to the end of the waves, is that right? So we only go about four hundred, five hundred metres out to sea? That's what we sort of rule over?
Rule over.
And what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at, what I'm trying to say is that once, we only go as far as the wa- I'm sure it's the end of the wave line. Because I remember during Covid, because we had to look after to the end of the wave line, and after that is state. So what I'm trying to get at, is it a state issue, because it's four kilometres out to sea, or is it even a federal issue? So ultimately, we don't make the decision, we just, we, I know we're only endorsing, but I just, is it a state issue or is it a federal issue, once you go past the wave line?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's to the low, mean water mark, is where the council is, has responsibility for, and will be a state issue until it goes out a certain distance, which becomes a federal issue.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hay.
I had the privilege of speaking to Mr Sam Baxter just before the meeting. Just quickly, I'd like to point out that firstly, there is, Mr Sam Baxter is the current president of the Gordon's Bay Scuba Diving Club. Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to point out that of the fourteen thousand signatures, there have been four thousand in the, in Coogee and Marubra. They did a, and there was also a pen and paper petition, it wasn't an online petition, so they actually had to go out and get the signatures of people in person. Again, the question was raised about the cost of the environmental impact statement, I believe that will be, they're allowing the state government to pay that. And also, a lot of people who do scuba diving only do the initial course and then stop, where you only do a scuba diving course, the open water certificate, where you can only dive down to eighteen metres. The attraction of something like this is that it will be sunk to a depth of thirty metres, so if someone wants to explore the wreck, they'll have to, they can only do it on their fifth dive, if they're guided, and it will bring people back scuba diving, and it will be of benefit to that community and to the community as a whole, and I commend the motion.
Just clarify that I did send to Mr Kelly a proposed motion.
Mr Kelly, have you received any email from councillor Nielsen? Okay, you have. Councillor Nielsen, can I please confirm, is it a foreshadowed motion in the event that this fails, or is it a proposed amendment? Okay, it's a foreshadowed motion, okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There's been a request to put it. Look, having spoken to this particular item, I don't feel the need in order to do it. I thank councillors for their views. I will now put the merrill minute, or is there a call for, yep, there's a call for a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We have councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, and the mayor. Thank you, all those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veitch, Chapel, Olive, Wilson, and D'Souza. With that, I declare the merrill minute carried. Thank you. We now move to MM nine slash twenty-three, financial assistance and donations. Councillors, I take it that you have read the merrill minute, and I commend it to the floor. Are there any speakers? Councillor Olive.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment by removing part A, the first part of this, which is to purchase three tickets from Randwick Rugby.
Yes.
Oh, it's a note, okay, I'm sorry, then, I apologise, I thought it was funding that was, oh, funding, but funding has been given.
So councillor Olive, just for your information, point A, the purchase of those tickets was determined under delegation in light of the fact that the Randwick Rugby Lunch occurred in, in between meetings. The amount was underneath the merrill delegation in order to do that. The practice which of the council has been is four items decided under delegation is to report them to council for essentially transparency purposes. Thank you. Councillor Olive.
I'd still like to just make the point then, because it was a point that I was trying to make, that, you know, sort of, we are well over budget in terms of the, of the merril contingency fund, and that, you know, sort of, are we going to pull back on that? I mean, and I think, we have to think of this in light of, you know, sort of, the total community investment programme, where the other, the other programmes, the Creative Connect and Community Connect and Community Creative, and their funding has been frozen, whereas, you know, sort of, the merril contingency continues to, to increase. And so, you know, sort of, it's sixty thousand dollars or so over budget so far, and it continues to climb. So, you know, sort of, I think that we have to consider some rebalancing, I suppose, or, I mean, we do, you know, increase the amount of the merril contingency, but we increase the amount of those other funds at the same time, you know, sort of commensurate. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I, just to say, the reason for doing that also is because, you know, sort of, the others go through a rigorous vetting process, whereas, you know, sort of, the merril contingency doesn't have that same level of rigor, and so I think that's an important consideration.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put MM nine slash twenty-three. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to MM ten slash twenty-three, Zero Childhood Cancer Programme. Councillors, I take the merrill minute as having been read. What I would like to do is to offer, on my own personal regard, congratulations to the Zero Childhood Cancer Programme and the entire team for the quite extraordinary work that is being undertaken in our own backyard. I think it is quite exceptional, and I appreciate at the time that you've taken out of what I am confident is a very busy schedule, working on this, in order to inform councillors and the community of that exceptional work. The other thing which I'd like to mention is I'd like to thank councillor Veitch for bringing this programme to my attention, and for suggesting that this be the subject of a merrill minute. With that, I commend the merrill minute to the floor. I have a hand up from councillor Chapel.
I just wanted to briefly commend the speaker and councillor Veitch, and you, Mr Mayor, for bringing this forward, and also just recognise how important this is, that this is happening in our LGA, and how meaningful this is for families in our area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Veitch.
Thank you, and yeah, I would also like to commend the merrill minute, and also to the team. You've done incredible work, just having spoken to you about it a little bit over the years, and just actually knowing that, you know, there's people in your team who are literally working around the clock, not sleeping, until you're just crunching those numbers, until you find the magic, the magic, you know, I won't say bullet, but, you know, the magic, you know, bit of DNA that sort of unlocks, unlocks the key to a cure, and the impact that's had on families, the fact that it's really high-level revolutionary scientific work that's literally just happening down the road, and is now being spread out to Australia and internationally is really, really significant, and I'm sure a lot of us will welcome the opportunity to come and visit, we'd love to learn more. So thank you very much for coming and for all your work.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put the merrill minute. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. We now move to MM eleven slash twenty-three, Illuminating Randwick Town Hall. Councillors, I take it that you have read the merrill minute. The one remark that I will give is, this merrill minute comes in response to a community request to light up the town hall in consultation with our new director of community and culture. The advice that I've received is councillors currently investigating a lighting system for the town hall already. What this merrill minute proposes to do is, in the event that there is a decision of council to approve said lighting, to include this particular cause, World Inflammatory Bowel Disease Day, as well as the development of guidelines in future for the consideration of requests such as that at a future date. It does not commit council to any funding decision or any course of action, except that in the event that there is a, the procurement of lighting equipment at the town hall, that this be considered as part of that. I commend the merrill minute to the floor. I have a hand up from councillor Nielsen, then councillor Pandefini.
Mr Mayor, I have no problem with the request for the lighting, and I generally have no request, problem with requests that we have for the lighting. However, if you look at the cost that you have got here in your report, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and you look at the cost, the fees at present time, three thousand five hundred every time, it's going to take us an awfully long time with the number of requests that we get to cover the two hundred and twenty thousand. I would suggest to you that in a couple of years' time, maybe, when I say a couple, maybe five years' time, we'll have a really spanking new way of improving lighting. I would respectfully suggest we hold off on a big expenditure on lighting and stick with our rather primitive lighting that works perfectly well at the moment, and see whether somebody comes up with some spanking new, far less environmentally objectionable electric costs and so on and so forth. I think that the costs that we've got at the moment are something that we can bear on our annual basis quite comfortably. The other cost is quite a large expense, and I don't think it's justified. That's my opinion, and my advice to whoever is going to accept it, either you or the staff or-
Thank you. Thank you very much councillor Nielsen for those comments. As it relates to this proposed merrill minute, it is my interpretation, I'm happy to throw to either the general manager or the acting director, that this does not commit us to any particular course of action as it relates to the procurement of permanent illumination of the town hall. Could I just confirm that through to the relevant officer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On my reading of the merrill minute, it does not have council commit any budget allocation for this particular project, they will have to come back to the council once guidelines have been developed, and for the council to make a determination.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Veitch, Chapel, and Sedd.
I just have a question following on from councillor Nielsen's comments. How much are we actually spending at the moment annually on these lighting arrangements?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. From memory, last year, we lit the town hall three times. I believe it was around Grand Final Games, and also when the Queen passed away, so about three times in the last year.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, I think it's great. I just have a couple of questions, I might just whack them all in one, if that's okay. In considering this, I imagine there's going to be some heritage considerations, because we're in a heritage-listed building, are we? Are we not? Also, will we have a lighting policy so that we're not turning it on every night? And do we have a process for talking to our neighbours about whether this is going to bother them?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. As part of the guidelines, councillor, those are the things we'll look at, and we'll bring that back to council, and then with a view to if the council be up to the community, ask the community if they're satisfied with those guidelines.
Thank you, councillor Sedd.
Actually, just to carry on with, two questions, and one to carry on with councillor Nielsen. Actually, we did look at exactly the same proposal years ago, and we were looking at LEDs and all that, and I think it was getting better and better and better all the time, so it will get better at some stage, and it'll change colour and you just do it all by computer. But my question is, have we already approved the bowel cancer? I'm not saying go against it, but there's no financial cost, yet it's three and a half thousand dollars. So have we already approved it, or is it going to be another three and a half thousand dollars for the bowel cancer?
Thank you. So there are-
There's no financial implication at this stage, but we have, we are, if we agree to this merrill minute, we're obviously agreeing to the bowel disease alongside future requests, which means that there will be a three and a half thousand dollar cost.
From my, from my interpretation, but I'm happy to get the concurrence of any of the general manager or the directors, that this does not commit us to any course of action, except for, were council to make a decision in regards to permanent lighting for a lighting consideration, which would be subject to a future report. Just, just to confirm, what I will do is I'll seek the response of the relevant director, and then I'll allow you to ask a follow-up, Mr General Manager or any of the relevant directors.
Mr Smith, that's certainly my understanding, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Sedd.
Yeah, so basically, all I'm asking is, have the world the bowel cancer disease day, have we agreed for this in the past, or we haven't agreed for it yet? Was the merrill minute asking for us tonight to agree to illuminating, which I haven't got a problem with, but that means it will be a financial cost if we do, it'll be a three and a half thousand dollar financial cost at the bottom.
I will seek the advice of the relevant officer. From my understanding, I'm not aware of any previous consideration of this particular request. I will then go back to the general manager, if his advice remains the same as it relates to any financial implications as a result of this merrill minute.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to note, council of, the mayor's office does receive numerous requests each year to light the town hall for various causes. My reading of this merrill minute is to say that we're unable to do it this, this time. However, in future, should the infrastructure be in place, it would be something that would be supported.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put the merrill minute. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Councillors, the merrill minute's now being completed. What I will do is call for a fifteen-minute break, and council will resume at eight twenty- we'll go for a break now. We'll go for a break now. Thank you, councillors, we'll go for a break now, we will return at eight twenty-five PM. Thank you.
I'll do anything for you. That's what I'll give to you. Every single day. It makes my love so true. I'll do anything for you. That's what I'll give to you. Every single day. It makes my love so true. I'll do anything for you. That's what I'll give to you. Every single day. It makes my love so true. I'll do anything for you. It's what we really need. It's the best thing for you and me. It makes me love you more and more and more.
Thank you, councillors. I reopen the Ramwick Council meeting at eight thirty-five P M. Thank you, councillors. Please proceed. Can I please confirm that we are recording? Thank you. We now move to urgent business. Councillors, is there any urgent business? Thank you. councillor Veitch.
I've sent it through to Mr Kelly.
Councillor Veitch, before you begin, could you please explain to the meeting why this matter is considered urgent?
Because approval has been given by the Federal Minister for the Environment, Tanya Clibbisek. We get the environmental approval for the Camay Ferry Wharf. So that now is essentially has the all-clear to proceed. Therefore, this matter is urgent that we write to the New South Wales Government, asking that it not proceed.
Thank you councillor Veitch. Being a procedural motion to consider the matter, I will now go straight to a vote as to whether or not the matter is considered urgent. If successful, I will then ask councillor Veitch to outline the motion that she is seeking to move. All those in favour of considering the urgent business? Okay, thank you. All those against? Thank you. Okay, I declare the urgent business carried. Thank you councillor Veitch. Could you please outline your urgent business, what you're seeking to move?
It's essentially that we write to the New South Wales Premier, Chris Minns, the member for Maruba, Michael Daly, the member for Coogee, Dr Margery O'Neill, and the member for Heffron, Ron Hernig, and the Minister for Transport, the new Minister for Transport, the Honourable Joe Halen, as a matter of urgency, requesting that the transport for New South Wales Camay Ferry Wharf project, which was approved in July twenty twenty-two with the final Commonwealth approval coming through on the sixteenth of March, not proceed. And this is due, we have a number of council resolutions opposing the Camay Ferry Wharf. This matter has been debated and discussed at our council for the last couple of years. We've had some comprehensive motions put forward. We've written to the Premier and the various ministers expressing our opposition. And now with a new government in place, there may well be an opportunity to draw a line under this project.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Olive. Before councillor Olive is the seconder, in light of having seen the text of the motion, I actually have a declaration to make. The member from Maruba, the Honourable Michael Daly now, is named in the substance of the motion. Mr Daly is my employer. I would like to declare a non-significant, non-procurnary interest as it relates to writing a letter. Councillor Olive is the seconder of the motion. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, do you wish to close the debate? Does not wish to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? I declare the motion carried. Thank you. We will now move on to in serioadem, the consideration of staff reports. Thank you. The first one, councillors, as I'm working down the business paper and I'm looking down, could you please call out, as I can't see, raise your hand if you would like to challenge any items? CP two slash twenty-three, conflict of interest policy for council-related development. Councillor Sid, just for the purposes of assisting councillor Nielsen, could you please challenge CP two slash twenty-three? Okay, councillor Sid has challenged CP two slash twenty-three. Okay, thank you. This is to confirm, this is the conflict of interest policy for council-related development? Yep. Thank you very much. CP three slash twenty-three, public notification of the voluntary planning agreement of one hundred and eleven to one hundred and twenty-five Anzac Parade and one hundred and twelve Todman Avenue, challenged by councillor Hamilton. CP four slash twenty-three is challenged by councillor Pandefini. Director of City Services reports, CS six slash twenty-three, improving drainage options on Anzac Parade between Lawson Street and Hillary Parade, Matreville, challenged by councillor Luxford. So, sorry, councillors, I'm looking down, I heard councillor Luxford. CS seven slash twenty-three, draft Matreville Public Domain Master Plan. In this instance, I did hear councillor Burst first, challenged by councillor Burst. CS eight slash twenty-three, Doncaster Avenue, Ascot Street, challenged by councillor Luxford. Okay, CS nine slash twenty-three, Arden Street, Dolphin Street, pedestrian review, challenged by councillor McCafferty. Okay. CS ten slash twenty-three, cycleways and bicycle facilities advisory committee, unchallenged. Our first unchallenged item. CS eleven slash twenty-three, Heffron Centre lease and licence finalisation. We almost got there. Unchallenged, challenged by councillor Veitch. Director of Community and Culture reports, CC one slash twenty-three, community investment programme, February twenty twenty-three, challenged by councillor Olive. CC two slash twenty-three, Knox Knights Sculpture Walk, twenty twenty-three, funding allocation carryover. Challenged by councillor Veitch. CC three slash twenty-three, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. CO one slash twenty-three, investment report, unchallenged. CO sixteen, monthly financial report, unchallenged. Thank you. Can I please have a mover of the unchallenged items? Moved councillor Hamilton, seconded councillor Chapel. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. CP two slash twenty-three, conflict of interest policy for council-related development, moved councillor Sid. Could you please outline what you are moving? Thank you. Can I have a seconder, please? Seconded by councillor Burst. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. CP three slash twenty-three, public notification of the voluntary planning agreement, I'll just read the title. One-one-one to one twenty-five Anzac Parade and one-one-two Todman Avenue Kensington. I'd just like to note that councillor Rosenfeld has now left the room. Do I have a challenge by councillor Hamilton? And councillor Nielsen has also left the room. Moved councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton, could you please outline what it is you are moving?
Moved as per the recommendations of the business paper.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Sid. Councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Just have a few questions.
Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to speak to the motion as moved, as the mover? Councillor Sid is the seconder. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr Mayor, sir. I love when these come up because I'll give my same spiel. We've got a new G M, so I might as well give a new spiel as the usual. Can I just ask, this has actually already been agreed to, so we're not going against the D A. Can I just remind everyone that for, if you add it up, there's nearly ten million dollars here that goes directly to the Kingsford and Kensington area. It can't go anywhere else. But I may ask the director of planning, does that five point four million, or even the general manager, the five point four million dollars for affordable housing, does that go into a consolidated revenue fund for the whole of the L G O, or just does that stay within the Kensington-Kingsford precinct?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just in answering the first part of the question, the development application has been approved and there's conditions on the consent relating to a planning agreement between council and the applicant. The affordable housing contribution, that is subject to the K D K Affordable Housing Plan. The objectives of that affordable housing plan are to support the Health and Education precinct and provide for low to moderate income housing for key workers and the like. So predominantly, that would be allocated within the proximity of the Health and Education precinct. But it does allow council to apply those funds, and they are restricted funds for the purposes of affordable housing outside the general area. As long as it's demonstrated that it is an accessible location and contributing to the affordable housing to support the centre.
Thank you. I just, and also at the same time, would like to remind all the councillors that are running for state parliament that their mantra was affordable housing, and unfortunately, the same people that, yes, it is, because the same people who are about to reject it actually asked for it. You can't have affordable housing if you're not getting payments for affordable housing. And at the same time, this is for the Scape buildings, which will take in students who are actually renting at the same time, renting units around Kensington and Kingsford. So if you give those people somewhere to stay, we also are allowing more, freeing up more space to rent. And at the same time, we're also providing students with accommodation. And if we think outside of the square, when something like, somewhere like Scape, which I know they do in other council areas, do deals with places like St George Housing or City West Housing, and you may get two or three floors for affordable housing, where single mums and even, and women who are divorcees and men who are divorcees and single and can't afford a place on their own, they are now giving those places over. This is what Scape's doing and other L G Os, so we may have to start thinking outside the square and asking them to work together in partnership, rather than keep rejecting V P As that have already, on buildings that have already been decided, and we're not stopping them from getting built. We're actually stopping ourselves from getting ten million dollars' worth of benefits.
Thank you councillor Sid. Before I go to councillor Chapel, I'd just like to remind all councillors to keep your remarks to the substantive motion, and that all speakers will also be heard in silence. They're two separate matters in regards to that. Councillor Chapel, then I have a hand up from councillor Pandefini.
Sorry, I didn't take this as a point of order, but we haven't rejected any of these V P As, so that point is a little moot.
Councillor Sid, councillors will be heard in silence. Thank you. Councillor Chapel, please continue.
So I just have a question. We are told that the construction cost here for this one is ninety million. But I don't have a value here for what the final property itself is going to be worth, to understand kind of what uplift they're getting on this site and the value there. I'd also love to know around financials. It says approximately five point four million dollars. They're able to give us their construction cost within four dollars. Why do we only say approximately five point four?
Through to the Director of City Planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In terms of the value of the development, that's the criteria by which the affordable housing and other contributions are calculated. In terms of the affordable housing calculations, they are based on the percentage rate per square metres of floor area, based on the viability and feasibility model that was undertaken at the time to demonstrate that the additional uplift that was provided through the development standards allowed for that contribution to be made and still allow for the development to proceed. The actual value of the development now is not a factor that's taken into consideration as to what is able to be provided through in terms of contributions. It's, as I said, it's really based on the costs of the development, the uplift and the value of the land, and the percentages that can be factored into that to then allow for the contributions to be returned to council. Really, in terms of the approximation, that is just a way it was communicated in the report. The actual figure to the dollar and cents is actually in the planning agreement. That was just the council office is just making an approximation.
Thank you. A follow-up from councillor Chapel. I then have councillor Pandefini and then a hand up from councillor Veitch. Councillor Chapel, your follow-up question.
It was just going to be a brief comment.
Your brief comment.
Okay. Which is just to say, I recognise this development is happening. We are accepting here a partial monetary contribution in lieu of bicycle parking of facilities, which suggests to me there's not going to be bicycle parking facilities at a development we know is not going to have a lot of parking. So I do raise some questions about that. And I note councillor Sid's commitment to affordable housing, and in fact, I note the commitment of many of us around this table. And I'm just going to make the point that five point four million dollars is not going to be enough, and we need to start being more ambitious in what money we are getting into our affordable housing fund.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini.
Through to the relevant officer. I know that, I'm sure that it's been outlined, but what kind of sustainability rating does this building have? Do we have, what's the kind of solar panel coverage and what kind of electric charges and things like that? Is that something that can be summarised very briefly as well in these kinds of reports?
Through to the Director of City Services, sorry, the Director of City Planning, to answer the particular question, if he believes it's relevant to the matter at hand.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The sustainability measures in the building met the Development Control Plan requirements, and I think it was a six-star rated building from memory, but I can certainly take that on notice and provide you the details of the report that was provided.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini, did you have any further comments?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I do support this particular plan, but I do think that it's really important that that kind of eye line is included in something like these recommendations. So it'd be great to see that in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Look, I do feel I have to address some of the comments made by councillor Sid, which I believe were highly inappropriate. And all I can say is that we don't have any indication in this report as to, as councillor Chapel noted, what sort of revenue is going to be generated for the developer by this proposal, which I believe is significant. And I believe that is the kind of information we need in these reports, so we can actually understand the kind of profits they're going to be making, and therefore, what sort of, what would in fact be an appropriate contribution for affordable housing. These small amounts of money in the scheme of things are not in These small amounts of money in the scheme of things are not in any way going to solve the housing crisis that is facing our community. And I'm very much looking forward to supporting any motion that councillor Sid or others might put up. Um, calling for a rent freeze, calling for a massive uplift in our public housing estate. Uh, calling for a ban on Airbnb or in fact, uh, severe restrictions on them. And all of the other issues that have led to a severe housing crisis, whether you are wishing to rent, whether you're in public housing. Or whether you are wishing to buy. So I find those comments extremely objectionable and I very much hope councillor Sid and others in this room will be exhorting the new government. To impose, take some real action on what is a terrible crisis facing many in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, uh. Now ask councillor Hamilton if she'd like to close the debate.
No, thank you.
Thank you. And now put the motion, uh, it being a planning matter, I will go straight to a division. All those in favour of the recommendation on the business paper, please raise your hand. All those in favour of the recommendation on the business paper, okay. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Pandefini, councillor. Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Veitch, Hay, Luxford and Chapel. I declare, uh, it carried. We now move to the other challenged item, CP four slash twenty-three. Can I just confirm that councillor Rosenfeld has also conflicted out on this one too? Yes, he is. Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a mover? Moved councillor Sid, seconded councillor Burst. Councillor Sid is the mover of the motion. Okay, thank you. As, as per the recommendation on the business page, councillor Burst. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Pandefini.
Yeah, I've got a similar question with this one. What was this sustainable rating on this? And what kind of solar panel coverage and electric vehicle charger information do we have on hand?
Through to the director of city planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, all the key sites of the nodes, um, which is in around this intersection of Todman. Um, and Anzac Parade, um, had to meet the design excellence provisions and. Um, there was the energy sustainable rating of the six stars and there are, um, limited parking in the development. Um, being student accommodation. Um, but I, I do recall there being EV chargers, um, within the development. But I can certainly provide those details to council.
And just a follow-up question. What kind of solar panel coverage would a six-star building have?
Through to the director of city planning.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll, I'll have to take that on notice.
Thank you.
But one more question, sorry.
Councillor Pandefini, then councillor Chapel.
Yeah, I know that councillor Sid, um, pointed out the extremely generous amount of, um, you know. Input that the previous project was putting in. In this one, I'd just like to note that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. The contribution is towards footb, in-kind footpath works. Including landscaping. Isn't that a council, um, like, isn't that what ratepayers already pay for? Is that something that, that, um, developers should be able to contribute nine hu, like such a small amount? And that be something that we accept, like footpath works?
I, I, I will take that as a question, uh, to the director of ci, city services. It did contain, it's of city planning, my apologies. You seem to be in my mind today, Tom. Um, uh, it, it did contain a, a level of commentary, but I will still take it as a question. Through to the director of city planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, the actual value of this development is thirty-seven million, therefore the commensurate, um, amount of contributions are, are lower. Um, in terms of the, um, infrastructure contributions plans in, um, in Kensington. Um, a key component of that was upgrades of pedestrian footpaths. Um, to a standard including widening of sections and ensuring that there is, um, appropriate last landscaping. Um, to, to soften, um, the edges of these, um, town centres. And so there, these, um, costings have been reviewed by, by council's asset engineers. Um, and they are deemed to be, um, some appropriate for, um, the Levzander that council is seeking within its public domain. Within the, within the town centre. Um, the landscaping and grid, grids, um, uh, contributions that are provided. Also towards building a network of landscaping to make, um, uh, the pedestrian ways into town centres more attractive.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Uh, I had a question. I just note on this VPA, um, there was a single submission and on the previous VPA, there were no submissions. Um, did, did we look into doing letterbox drops in the surrounding area or was it just done online?
Through to the relevant officer.
Uh, th, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, no, there was no, um, direct letters to, um, neighbouring properties. It's just an advertisement within council's, um, website.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to close the debate? Sorry, councillor Sid, actually, my apologies. Councillor Sid.
Just one quick question. When we employ someone like Marsden to work out the VPA's, obviously they're doing it in the benefits of, of council. So they try to get the maximum, uh, benefit they can get because they're working for us. Within the confines of the rules and regulations and the laws of, so there's not much else they could do other than. Fight for us to get as maximum as we can. Is that right? When they do these VPA's, is that why we leave it in their hands?
Director of city services. Oh my goodness. The director of city planning.
I, I think you want me closer, Mr Mayor.
I note that this is on the public record.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, council's lawyers certainly act in council's interests, um, but within their own ethical standards. But, um, certainly they, uh, ensure that, um, the, the documents are, um, withstand any legal challenge. Um, and are appropriate and as I said, en, ensure that they do protect council's interests.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, oh, sorry, it being a planning manager, we'll go straight to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid. Councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Pandefini, councillor Veitch, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford and councillor Chapel. I declare the matter carried. Thank you. We now move to director of city services report number CS six slash twenty-three. Moved by councillor Luxford, is that correct? Thank you, moved councillor Luxford. Do I have a second up? Seconded by councillor Hay. Councillor Luxford, could you please outline what it is that you are moving?
So, um, I'll be moving this as per the recommendation on the business paper, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hay is the seconder.
I'll just second reserve my right.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Can I just speak, please, Mr Mayor?
Oh, coun, councillor Luxford, there's a move.
Um, so I commend this report, especially I commend, um, the third point, uh, fourth point down. That Lenthall Street will be investigated. Um, we had to have a rescue. I believe at the bottom of Lenthall Street through the bad weather we had a few weeks ago. Um, West Kensington was cut off from the world, so to speak. And we have been experiencing this problem for the last, I don't know, probably more than twenty years. Uh, the people that live on that corner house have had to build their driveway uphill. In order to stop the water coming in to their house, their garage and everywhere else. But it's still lately is seeming to, um, make its way a little bit up. So I am pleased that we are going to be investigating Lenthall Street.
Uh, I'd just like to quickly, um, thank council staff. This, this came at a, uh, council meeting last, uh, month. And, uh, it, it, it's heartwarming to see that it's got, uh, taken on so suddenly and being seen as a top priority. Uh, and normally sometimes I have to wait a bit longer than one month and I'd just like to thank everyone for their hard work.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I think I'd like to echo councillor Hay there. I just wanted to say thank you for being, responding to this so quickly. Um, I know the residents were very grateful at how quick council officers were out there looking at it. I know they are very grateful for their new drain. They've sent me photos of it. Um, and they're looking forward to what the new developments are going to be in the area.
Ca, coun, councillor Chapel, please continue. You've commenced. Thank you councillors. There'd been no discussion around, uh, the horseshoe. I have a hand up from councillor Veitch, then I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza. Were there any other speakers? There being no further speakers after that. Councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you. I also like to, uh, commend and thank the staff for their work and for doing this so quickly. I have a, a small amendment, um, which is essentially just an extra dot point, uh, which I've sent through to Mr Kelly. And that is simply, and I'll ask the mover if she'd be happy to accept. It's that receiver report detailing further possible options at the earliest opportunity in the event the grant application. For the detailed investigation and feasibility study for Lenthall Street is not successful. So it's just if, uh, if the grant falls down, that we don't just leave it for another year to apply for the grant. The following year that we actually see what other options are available, uh, in the short term. So something can be done in the next financial year.
Councillor. Sorry, just on, councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford is the mover of the motion. Do you accept the proposed amendment from councillor Veitch? Okay, thank you. It's now incorporated into the motion, a point, new point C. Okay, thank you. On the motion, I have councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to compliment councillor Chapel. And I was very disappointed with myself and because these residents were South Ward residents. And they turned to another councillor because they felt abandoned. And I apologised to them and.
Ca, coun, councillor Sid, councillor Sid, thank, so ca, thank you coun, thank you councillors, all speak.
It's a point of order, sorry, it's a point of order, a, a point of order.
Okay, I, I will hear your point of order, but it needs to actually be a point of order as it relates to the code of meeting practice.
It does, because I was just verbal, because no one ever came to me and I did not abandon anyone. I was implied, and so was councillor Burst, that we abandoned these people. We didn't abandon anyone. I wasn't sitting there shooting, saying, shall I know with them? I didn't know.
Look. Uh, ho, just, just before, just before, before you re, resume your seat. A point of order has been called as to the comments of councillor D'Souza implying the conduct of other councillors. Ha, ha, just, just hold on, hold on, hold on, thank you. Having, this is what the point of order is suggesting. Having heard the comments of councillor D'Souza, I don't believe that that is an unequivocal statement. Made by councillor Sid, which, that is the only interpretation which could be made from that statement. I think there are a range of, um, different interpretations which could be made. As a result, I rule that there is no point of order. Councillor D'Souza, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm sorry if I offended you, but guilty conscience, you know, but I.
What of order, Mr Mayor?
Thank, thank you.
The hole deeper and deeper. I, I, I do not have a guilty conscience because these people never approached me. And I can actually tell you why they're wrong basically, but I won't get into that.
What, what I will do is councillor D'Souza. In the interest of progressing the agenda and us having quite a busy agenda. What I would kindly ask all councillors is to keep your remarks directly relevant to the report that is in front of us. Uh, I would suggest, while it is not in any way a di, a direction, um, that, that we keep. Uh, comments directly relevant to that and not straying in a manner which could be interpreted by others. Regardless of whether or not that is the original intention. Councillor D'Souza, please continue.
Mr Mayor, I felt I abandoned those people. Because they didn't have the confidence to come to me as their local councillor. They approached councillor Chapel. And I respect it and I respect what she did. I liaise with these people on a regular basis. They ring me now because they've got my confidence. I want to also compliment the man you kept calling out to today, the director of city services. He will confirm on a regular basis. I've rung him after this event. And he and his team have addressed the concerns of the residents. So they're, 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 they feel very comfortable. They know council's looking at, after them and I definitely support this. I support any, an investigation. I support anything that can be done to help these people. And I do want to compliment the team for the immediacy with which they've acted. You could hear and see the frustrations from the speakers. I, I won't use that word again, but I really felt very guilty. I felt here were these people in need. Here were these people who felt that the houses. There was a woman who said she had to walk to her car because it was needy. I felt guilty. I felt I had abandoned them. But once councillor Chapel brought it to our attention, since that day I've liaised with them. Council has liaised with them and now we're moving even further. I just want to say thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor D'Souza. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll ask if the mover of the motion, councillor Luxford, would like to close the debate? Okay, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare the matter carried. Thank you. We now move to CS seven slash twenty-three. Draft Matchville Public Domain Master Plan and Public Exhibition Outcomes. Moved by. Councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza will leave the chamber. Uh, councillor Burst, could you please outline, just one second? Okay, thank you. Councillor Burst, could you please outline what it is that you are moving?
Um, as per the recommendations of the report.
And I just. Before you begin, councillor Sid, do you wish to second the motion? Thank you. Seconded by councillor Sid. Councillor Burst, please continue.
There is, is times that, um, South Ward is abandoned. And it's great to see that this master plan is now finally brought forward. And I commend that we are, we're looking at how we can make Matchville City Town Centre great again. And, um. It's a, it's, it's a town, it's a town centre that, it's a town centre that needs to be revitalised. It's, um, it looks quite.
Ca, councillor Burst, could you just pause for a second? Councillors. All councillors will be heard in silence when they speak. I'd like to remind everyone, and it is everyone, to refrain from comments across the chamber, which disrupts the flow of thought. For the speaker, but it also interrupts the flow of debate and for those who are listening, uh, online, however humorous it may be. Councillor Burst, please continue.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Um, Snyder remarks aren't appreciated. Um. But, um, yes, I think it's important that we, uh, look at how we can revitalise Matchville. A lot of businesses are struggling there, um, and I've spoken to many of the, um, the businesses down there. And they're, um, they're ready to close up shop because there's nothing happening. So this is an opportunity to try and revitalise Matchville and I'm certainly, uh, I'll support it. And, um, let's try and fast track it as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Uh, I'll speak as a second to Mr Mayor. Um, I'd also like to thank the council officers who have put this together. It's been, uh, suppose a long time coming, but good things happen in the end. Um, just to remind, it actually started in the previous council. Um, and we've got the Matchville precinct and a few other people have been asking us when it's, when it's all happening. And we've made a commitment to them that in the original part of this draft plan, that we were meant to. We have a short-term, uh, happenings and we've got short-term outcomes, long-term outcomes, medium-term outcomes. that we were meant to, we have a short-term uh happenings and we've got short-term outcomes, long-term outcomes, medium-term outcomes. But the people of Matchville, the Matchville Precinct and a few others have given resolutions after their meetings that if we can just do very simple immediate outcomes, things like just plantings, uh improving shop fronts, uh the real simple sort of stuff and that's all we ever asked for. And if we can see that immediately rather than in a month, few months' time, years' time, et cetera, uh we'd be very happy. The rest can come later, but we really do need an uplift as soon as possible and all we ask for is vegetation, plantings, just beautification of the area and also um and to, that goes hand in hand with um the uh arrow at Perry Street. So thank you very much.
I had a hand up from councillor Veitch, then councillor Pandefin.
Uh yeah, look, I'm also very happy to support this and I guess I would just like to make the comment that the the short-term section and actually all of it just seems like such a long time, like, you know, I I feel that, you know, not much money's been spent in Matchville. It could be, you know, really promoted, make a nice area because lots of people, so you get hordes of people driving down to La Perouse. You can probably never get a spot in one of the cafes or restaurants. They should really be building this up and promoting it as a bit of a another stopover place that people could go, uh you know, maybe if they're not from the area, go go and stop in Matchville on the way and and you know, have lunch or or dinner or something. Um and obviously it would also be a huge benefit to the residents of Matchville. I just um I hope this doesn't just kick, get kicked down the road and they can actually get started and start implementing uh some of this work as soon as possible because um yeah, a- as we know, s- some areas are sort of very centralised where people like to go in our LGA. But I think if we actually put a bit more effort, um we could diversify and uh yeah, so that's my comments.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini.
Um yeah, I'd also like to commend the staff on this um work and also I'd just like to make the the point that it's so um fantastic to see the um feedback from the community. Um you know, it's really overwhelming. We can see that people want spaces to um come together um to be safer, to be more vibrant, um and it's really important that we get this kind of feedback, this amount of feedback um and that we also listen to the community on this. So yeah, I really commend this plan. I think it's very exciting.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Burst, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you very much. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to the next notice, uh di- director of city services report. CS eight slash twenty-three. Councillor D'Souza will return to the room, which she is doing. Uh Doncaster Avenue and Ascot Street, Centennial Park, Kingsford Walking and Cycle Improvements Project, proposed intersection intervention moved by. Councillor Luxford, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Luxford is the mover of the motion.
Um so I'm moving this as per the recommendation on the business paper and I would like to just say that I told you so. Um this roundabout should never have been taken out of Doncaster Avenue and I'm waiting for the roundabout to be re- put back down in Day Avenue where there's a horrible, um it's just awful down at at Day Avenue and Doncaster, what is going on down there. And with the removal of that roundabout, I can only foreshadow we will be replacing that one too. Um I did experience the left turn only and I closed my eyes in the, in the backseat of the car I was travelling in because the cars on the opposite side of the road wanted to turn at the same time that there was a left turn and people were just going like left turn without looking. And I thought we're going to die here on the intersection of Ascot Street. The left turn only did not work, so I am pleased that we are putting back the roundabout for the safety of everybody that uses that street, um particularly the parents that were getting caught up in the whole system there that are taking their kids to school. Um you know, having a deal with no roundabout anymore, no parking, no anything. So um I'm pleased that the roundabout is being put back.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton is the seconder of the motion.
Yes, I also am very pleased. I think that this is a very smart decision. And when I look at the conclusion, concluding remarks, I can see that they, they quoted a design issue was identified. And yes, it was identified by councillor Luxford. Um no, a lot of people did uh express their concerns with what had taken place there and I think this is a, an excellent way to rectify it, so thanks.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza, then councillor Sedd. Anyone else? Councillor D'Souza.
Mr Mayor, public safety and public interest go hand in hand. I think, I felt, and I have to be say it that way in case I offend others, uh that I felt that our public safety was compromised when we did what we did. I'm glad we've reviewed it and I'm glad that we're getting an outcome which all the community will benefit from, especially the young families and other groups who contribute to our economy. I'll leave it at that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza, councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got an actual question. I, the, one of the previous meetings that we had about whether we were going to install the roundabout, I just need to ask the relevant officer, I I'm almost positive the cost, if we were to go, there was two uh ways we were thinking about, the left-hand turn and another roundabout. And I'm sure the roundabout was three hundred thousand dollars, because I remember saying that was the same cost as what it costs to do Perry Street. And um and that's how it's in my mind, but there's no, there's no recollection of the three hundred thousand and now it's almost seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, and that's only in a estimate. So whenever we estimate, plus inflation, et cetera, it's, it's almost going to come to a million dollars. Did, was there a price of three hundred? I'm sure there was a roundabout idea for three hundred thousand. So am I correct or not correct?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, that's um correct. Councillor Sedd, we had a comparative uh roundabout uh provided to council at the time of the initial report, which was reflective of a a a roundabout in another um ward of the LGA. In further development of the design, uh we have now um obtained the new standards from Transport for New South Wales, uh which presented two options to council, one with the raised roundabout, which is, which is the more expensive option. Um but the design requirements for the roundabout and shared pathway in the t- Transport for New South Wales guidelines does uh require more work than that roundabout that was previously compared to council.
Thank you. There is a follow-up question from councillor Sedd.
So, Mr Mayor, my, sorry if it's in there and I haven't read it to the director, but does it actually uh say where it's coming out of, what part of the budget, what allocation and what year? And where it's coming from, because we're paying for this, aren't we? So is it actually any mention of where it's coming from? Because it would be, we never, we never applied for this, because when the bike track was getting built, it was all paid by the state money. Now we're almost, as I said, we're going to be coming in a million dollars outside of our budget for next year. Does that mean something will have to go?
Through to the relevant officer.
Councillors, um part C of the recommendation says that we'll seek funding from Transport for New South Wales as part of their twenty million dollar cycleway project, so we'll go to them first to see if we can get them to pay for the construction uh cost.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, uh councillor Luxford is the mover.
Um when the roundabout is built, I have another palm tree that I could contribute for the middle of it.
Thank you, councillor Luxford. I will now put the report. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. So excuse me, councillors, just one second. Uh we now move to C uh CS nine slash twenty-three, Arden Street and Dolphin Street Pedestrian Safety Review, challenged by councillor McCafferty.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I commend this particular business paper to my fellow councillors. Um this is uh I, and I move it as per the uh the business paper and the recommendation. It's a very busy um intersection, this particular one, and even I was staggered when I realised that over five years you're looking at traffic movements in excess, in excess of thirty-two million at this particular junction. And yet it is so close to the beach and it is such an important junction and it is so important. So thank you to the staff for who have worked on the report and the recommendation. Um the roundabout upgrade with the splitter island on Arden Street works very, very well. And I note that the recommendation is to investigate upgrades and splitter islands on the other connecting roadways of Dolphin and Arden Street. I'm not sure whether we will find that those are necessary, but in the meantime, I think we have come to a fairly wonderful solution and it has served us very well this most recent summer and I'm sure that it will continue to serve our community very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nielsen is, nope. Okay, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now, oh councillor McCafferty, don't wish to close the debate? No, okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to, uh okay. CS eleven slash twenty-three, Heffron Centre Lease and License Finalisation. Do I have a mover? Moved, it was. That, that was my suspicion. Moved councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Sedd. Councillor Hamilton is the mover.
Just to say that I um move it as per the recommendations on the business paper.
Thank you. Councillor Sedd is the seconder.
As per recommendation, and I just want to ask a question to the relevant officer. Um the, the, with that hundred metre track, the community can use it at certain times when South aren't using it. Just want to make sure.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch.
Uh thank you. Look, I will be voting against this report and I would actually urge councillors to really consider if you really want to support this. I mean, we haven't even been informed uh in this report as to how this uh varia- you know, where this variation in the plans was, which, which funding stream it came from. Was this the Souths or was this Randwick Council? It's not in the report, so I can only assume it's Souths. Was it a variation or? Um I don't understand this change of heart, you know, the initial uh, why are we granting an an additional licence? I mean, this was, this little area, this tiny little area, this was the whole thing for people who bought the dream of the Heffron Centre. The dream, the fantasy was pitched as this great community use where people could interact with the Souths players and they could hang around and they could do stuff, you know, but what we see here now is, is that opportunity's not going to exist. There won't be any Souths players there uh during these other times. I mean, and I personally, my own kids would probably love to go and have a a k- a net to kick in. You know, they have to go up to UNSW. Uh they're the only nets that aren't just constantly taken up by uh you know, the the clubs who obviously are utilising them and that's great, but we need places where people can ju- kids can just go and kick a net, kick a ball into a net with their friends, you know, outside of um, you know, playing for for a club. Um we've had councillor Sedd put up a motion, we need a running track somewhere. But you know, we're getting a little, you know, albeit just a a warm-up sprint track and no one's going to be able to use it for most of the time. This was meant to be a shared area. Souths can still use it. They obviously don't want kids in there. That, this is literally what it is. Kids and people are going to want to come in and use it and they don't want them there. This is wrong. As it is, we've got less than two hours a week uh guaranteed access to the community uh rooms inside the centre. Um we don't know how they're going to be advertised, uh and now they're cutting this off as well. We're getting a, a really mingy little, a bit of money, eighty-seven dollars an hour for a brand-new uh facility which will be, uh imagine, quite popular. Um and there's just literally no reason to do this. We are not stopping Souths from using it. They will probably be the main ones using it anyway. They will utilise it. When they're using it, people aren't going to come in and try and barge in. They're not going to do that. So why, what is the purpose of this? We should vote against it. It's, Souths will be using it anyway. Let people come and use it. Uh and let's just leave it as it is. It's not, this is not going to be, if we vote against this, it's not, literally not going to disadvantage Souths in any way and I don't even know why this report is on the business papers in the first place. I urge you to vote against it.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I saw a hand up from councillor Chapel, then I'll go to councillor Burst. Councillor Chapel.
Thanks very much. Um uh I believe it was mentioned there'll be public access to this. Um this will be opening, I assume, when the rest of the Rabidows section of the Heffron Centre opens, which is within the next short while. I believe it was originally anticipated for the end of March. Um does that mean that, say, a running club would be able to go and use this track when that happens or how's that going to work?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Um the, a running group, I'm sure they wish to use the uh track, would be able to utilise that when the uh building is completely open to the public. There will be a slight transition period over maybe a couple of weeks uh and when the site's completely demobilised after the the thirty-first of March. Uh probably moving into April at at some stage, but a group um following the full demobilisation of site will be able to use that um track.
Mr Clark, that will then be by hire arrangement or there will be free access by the community onto the track?
Through to the director of city services.
Council, uh sorry, through you, Mr Mayor, council uh officers will include a rate um of similar nature to the Rabidows rate um in the new fees and charges for twenty-three, twenty-four, should they wish to exclusively book. However, should they just wish to passively use um and share with other community members, it's completely free of charge. It's at their choice, I suppose.
And so will there be a certain number of hours per week where that will be available, like is the case at ES Marks?
Director of city services.
O- outside the hours um stipulated in the report, I I wouldn't suggest that we encourage further bookings um on that particular site, rather that just opens for free uh community, community use.
Thank you. Uh councillor Burst.
Um I'm probably just elaborating on what um councillor Chapel was saying. So um Monday to Friday before eight uh nine AM and after five PM can be used and on Saturdays after midday and all day Sunday will be available to the community. Is that my understanding of this? Uh page one sixty-four?
Through to the director of city services.
Through you, Mr Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. Ca- I will go to councillor Hay, then councillor Sedd.
Councillors, I'll, I'll, I'll personally be uh voting for the motion. If we look at the figure on pa- uh figure seven on page one six-three, uh this is just the area of the goal-kicking net. Um this is, it's an area between the Souths um City Football Club and the field. Uh sometimes uh the players will need to practise kicking goals. Uh it was very important, particularly in the Golden Point victory over Manly on Saturday.
Councillor Hay will be heard in silence. Please continue, councillor Hay. But uh no, it's goal-kicking's an essential part of uh Sessi- uh of any NRL team and uh it should be included as part of the lease, so I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you. Before I go to councillor Sedd, councillor Sedd, have you already spoken on the matter?
Councillor Sedd, you have a question? Your question.
Uh my question is, Mr Mayor, because I was just thinking about when we've been talking about the licence. So as per what we do for synthetic fields, et cetera, if it is a non-per-profit organisation who just wants to have a run, obviously we're going to let them use it. But when there's people who are making profit through sprint training, as we've got people all over the LGA doing that, they would have to book it and then pay. I just want to make sure that we. they would have to book it and then pay. I just want to make sure that we are getting our payments for it, that's all.
Through to the Director of City Services.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Should someone wish to use the area outside of those, uh, times noted in the report exclusively, they will have to book the facility. Um, but should anyone like to use it passively, there's no fees at all.
Okay, so just to, to confirm, there has been a request to put it, which will mean that I will go to councillor Hamilton to close the debate. However, councillor Olive has a question. I'm happy to allow him to ask his question, just for the point of the question. To me, councillor Olive, your question.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by passively, in a sort of, can you, uh, elaborate on that, please?
Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you. So, Mr Mayor, I would liken the use of that area, uh, exactly to the, the same as a, an outdoor gym that council would, would say up and down our, our LGA, so any group can turn up and utilise that facility free of charge. Should they wish to use it exclusively, then they'll be required, like, shut the gates, they're required to book through council.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so any time no one else has got it booked, you can turn up and then have a go.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton to close the debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to close the debate and what I'd wanted to do is just respond to a couple of comments and, um, main thing that I'd like to, to talk to is the borderline, um, breach of con-, uh, what is it? God, I've just gone blank.
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct, thanks, my fav, yeah, it is. Um, so Code of Conduct, uh, in relation to fifteen-eleven D that questions around why a business paper has been brought to us, why the recommendations on that business paper have been put to us to vote, it really is imputing the, um, the motives of council staff. And I think that that's something we should try to avoid as much as possible because they are working very, very hard to ensure that these projects do stay on track, on budget and they are open to the community. And all the answers that we've heard just now really do speak to the fact that this will be open to the community. It will be something that everyone will be able to enjoy and so any, any, uh, any kind of hint or reference to the fact that there might be some ulterior motives or, um, any imputing of the motives of council staff.
Sorry, point of order, excuse me.
Sorry, so, hold on, there, I have a point, so, than-, thank you. I will hear the point of order from councillor Veitch. Councillor Veitch, your point of order.
Look, every single meeting, if someone in this room, usually myself, does not agree with one of the staff reports or questions it, that is a legitimate role of council and you cannot just keep calling points of order because a councillor disagrees with an item in the business papers. It's absolutely ridiculous and I would ask her to withdraw the point of order. It literally is just the most stupid thing I've ever heard in my life.
Councill-, ca-, councillors, councillors, tha-, tha-, sorry, sorry, tha-, tha-, just, hold on, thank you, ca-, councillors. Thanks, hold on, please stop, thank you. There is a point of order which has been called by councillor Veitch. Point of order relates to the code of meeting practice, uh, in relation to the conduct of the meeting. Concerns around the code of conduct are best addressed in writing to the general manager and are taken in a different manner. Councillor Hamilton has concluded her remarks. I don't believe that there is any substantive grounds for a co-, uh, for a point of order as it relates to the code of meeting practice as it relate, uh, uh, as such, I rule that there is no point of order. Um, councillor Hamilton, having concluded her remarks, I will now put the, uh, motion to a vote. All those in favour of the recommendation on the business paper, please raise your hand. So, there has been a request for a division. We will go to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor De Souza and the mayor, I declare it carried. All those against, sorry, all those against, my apologies, councillor Pandefini, councillor Veitch, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive. Now I declare it carried. Thank you. We now move to C C.
Mr Nick and I raise a procedural motion to limit speakers to two minutes, uh, in the event of getting the meeting moving quicker, please.
Uh, despite the cries from the council of being a procedural motion, I do need to then put it. Um, all those in favour of the procedural, did you have a second to the procedural motion? Seconding councillor Sedd, all those in favour? All those against? I, I declare it. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recall it, just because you're all confused. All those in favour of the procedural motion, can call out aye? All those against? I declare the procedural motion carried. Thank you. It's all right. Thank you. C C one slash twenty-three Community Investment Programme, February twenty-twenty-three, challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, could you please outline, uh, are you moving or asking a question?
Uh, I'm moving then.
Okay, can I please have somebody move the recommendation as per the business paper? Moved as per the business paper, councillor Hamilton, do I have a second? I seconded councillor Luxford. Councillor Hamilton is the mover of the motion. Do you wish to speak?
I did, actually. Just briefly, uh, what I wanted to say was, um, I'd like to congratulate the Director of Community and Culture's first business paper, uh, report on the business paper, so, well done. Very exciting. I think that this is a fantastic initiative to, to instate a director focusing on community and culture. Uh, and so excited to see there are three, um, papers on the business paper, or mo-, I should say, um. She did write it.
Councill-, councillor Sedd, councillor Hamilton, please continue, just continue, it's not worth responding to, please continue.
Thank you very much, but yes, just congratulating, uh, Katie and her role and the entire team under her. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Luxford. Thank you. Councillor Olive, could you please outline to the meeting what it is you were moving as an amendment?
I'd like to, um, deal with these separately if it's possible, um, because they are distinct, so, um.
Ca-, can I, you're moving a single amendment or you are?
Uh, three single amendments.
Okay, what I would like you to do, councillor Olive, is to move an amendment and then to foreshadow your intention to move two subsequent amendments.
They, yes, they don't.
I'm not, I'm not going to have one amendment which we're going to then go through in parts because you can on-, only move one thing at one time.
All right, okay, but, uh, then one doesn't negate the other, so.
Okay, thank you. So, so councillor, councillor Olive, could you please outline what it is you are moving in the first instance? I will then call for a seconder on that.
Okay, um, that, uh, reading through the, um, uh, the, uh, proposals that were, um, or the, the, um, uh, the, uh, the proposals that were rejected for Community Connect and, um, and Community Creative. Uh, it, it, it struck me that a lot of these proposals seemed quite good, but the comments were that they were underdone and there is also, in sort of a feeling that maybe some of them were, uh, admitted into the wrong category and could have gone into a different category. Now, it would seem to me, you know, sort of a constructive thing if council had a way of providing feedback to those that submitted, um, these proposals to council, so that they would be able to take them away and work on their proposals and bring them back next time, uh, polished and ready to go and understanding more about the requirements that, uh, council are asking for. I asked council officers, uh, about this and there is apparently a staffing gap, uh, which doesn't enable, uh, that kind of, uh, um, that kind of activity to take place. So, what I asked for is, you know, sort of in this first, the first part of this, um, uh, amendment is to, um, enhance the Community Investment Programme by providing assistance and feedback to worthy but unsuccessful applications, so that they have the opportunity to resubmit later with a better understanding of the requirements. Um, understanding myself that this will have cost implications, so it would be, you know, sort of, hopefully come back in some sort of evaluation or report to council to consider.
Thank you. To confirm, just for the benefit of the meeting, what you are moving in this instance is D point one?
Uh, no, just D. The, the, sorry, that's written incorrectly. That is just D. Two, the two other parts are changes to those that were, um, uh, rejected or, or recommended.
Thank you, thank you. They're, they're both foreshadowed, is that correct?
They're both foreshadowed.
Okay, just for the benefit of those who are following, Mr Kelly, could you please add it, just push them down or remove them, I can, I anticipate confusion. Okay, thank you. Um, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Pandefini. Okay, thank you. Councillor Pandefini is the seconder of the motion. Councill-, okay.
Um, I would like to, um, also commend this amendment, having applied, um, as an artist and in arts organisations. Um, grant applications are pretty much the way you receive money to put on a project. That's ninety-nine point nine-five percent of the time. Um, my experience with, um, local council, um, state funding and the Australian Council over the past twenty years is that there is a process by which not every particular, um, application is responded to at length, but that, that there is a process that is undertaken to, you know, um, acknowledge the application and give, you know, put the feedback, just like we do with, um, you know, a lot of community feedback, um, put the feedback into categories and, you know, uh, then, you know, uh, send it out in bulk emails. And I think that that is very standard practice and so I would, um, think that we really need to, um, ensure that this programme works. We've got a huge amount of, um, community consultation that has gone on and there's a reason that we're running these programmes and I think that we really want to make sure that they're as successful as and we're supporting the community as much as possible.
Thank you. Um, just as a point of clarification to the mover of the amendment, I've just had a query from the general manager. Could I please confirm that your interpretation of point B is that it would trigger a staff report? Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Actually, what I do want to do is ask councillor Hamilton, as the mover of the motion, do you accept point D?
I'd, I'd like to ask a question of the director, if that's okay?
Yes.
Uh, if this was feasible, if there were staff available to, if not now but in the future, build up to, uh, the, the, the level that they could provide such, um, you know, quantifiable feedback like this?
Thank you. Through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yes, councillor Hamilton, um, that is correct. We do have an evaluation coming back to council in April on the programme and as was mentioned, we are looking to increase the resource around, um, the grants programme, so it would be possible.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm happy to accept that amendment.
Thank you. The amendment is now incorporated into the motion as moved. Okay, what I will now do is I will go back to councillor Olive, who has foreshadowed a further amendment. Um. That's fine. I, I will, before councillor Olive goes that, I'll, I'll go to councillor Nielsen's question. Councillor Nielsen, your question.
It's just a question in relation to, um, what, um, the, has been agreed to by the mover and I have no problem with the sentiments that's, um, put forward here, but I just was questioning the wording misdirected, um, and I was just trying to quickly look at my, um, thesaurus there to see whether there's a better word that we could have, um, chosen. Perhaps I'll keep looking at that, but misdirected, I wasn't sure whether it was not the best choice it was. Um, do you know what I mean? It's like, um, it could, do you know what I mean? It depends on how you're looking at it and, and if in fact it was, um, it might look like we're steering people who actually have something that's, yeah, okay, he's got his hand up, he's a fine person.
Sorry. What, what I'll do is I will throw first to, uh, the general manager in response to councillor Nielsen's, um, question and then if councillor Olive would like to further clarify, I will give him the opportunity as well.
Thanks. My, my understanding of councillor Olive's, um, wording there is that, um, sometimes applicants may put in a particular grant where it should be better allocated to another grant, the council, programme that council has, which is why it could be directed to that particular programme.
Yep. Th- thank you, councillors. Councillor Olive, would you now like to move your second amendment?
Yes, I, I'd like to, uh.
Councillor Olive, could you please turn on your microphone? Thank you.
Um, thanks. Uh, I'd like to add, you know, sort of a, um, uh, um, another application, you know, sort of, uh, that was rejected, uh, into the, um, uh, Community Connect, um, uh, investment stream and that is from the, uh, Cool Kids Youth, uh, Week, Pro-, Weave Cool Kids, uh, Youth Week Programme. And that's re-, related to, uh, uh, not the block party, but, you know, sort of going to high schools and getting, um, uh, getting high school students involved in the, um, planning and production of the block party. So, this is, you know, sort of about getting enthusiasm, getting, you know, sort of, uh, kids, uh, connected together, but also, you know, sort of getting them, uh, into something which they could be really interested in and having a final end result, which is the block party. And I see, you know, sort of that as something having big possibilities. The reason that it was rejected was because there was already money given to the block party, so it was rejected on that particular basis. Um, now, I can, we can point to, um, another, uh, application which was accepted and I'm not, and I'm not, um, arguing against the acceptance of this, but for, for Souths Care. That was, that was also accepted in the, um, Community Connect, uh, um, uh, stream. But, you know, sort of, uh, um, if we go to, you know, sort of the community contributions programme to Souths, forty thousand dollars is given to Souths, but half of that goes to, um, uh, to, um, uh, Souths Care. And so it's, it's just a similar, very similar situation where there's large money, annual amount of money going there, but that's not the re-, that wasn't. Souths Care wasn't rejected on that basis, but Weave was and so that, for that particular reason. Not only is it a good, um, programme to support, but also, you know, sort of, I think that, you know, sort of it, um, uh, treating the two different, uh, but equal situations differently. And so I would, um, recommend that this be included in the, um, Community Connect investment stream.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconding councillor Pandefini. Before I go to you councillor Pandefini, I just have a, uh, qu-, question of clarification as to the... Ju-, just, I, I, I will, just one, one second. I have a question of the general manager as to his interpretation of point E and the implication of this particular amendment on the Community Connect budget and future funding rounds, councillor, uh, not councillor, to the general manager.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, my understanding from councillor Olive's a-, amendment here is that, um, council to, um, accept the additional ten thousand dollars for this particular round, um, as there's no other funding source identified, we would then, um, take that from the, the future funding round for Community Connect for the council.
Th- thank you. Councillor Pandefini is the seconder. Councillor Pandefini can then speak to it if she would so wish. As the amendment, I will then go to councillor Sedd.
Um, yeah, I would like to commend this amendment. Um, it, it does kind of like touch on so many issues that, um, are really important in terms of youth and these, um, the Weave, um, programmes, in terms of, um, allowing, uh, the youth to be part of the, the project and be, um, involved. Um, you know, and, and really the amount that we actually spend on this, I mean, I, I understand that this is a separate issue, but the, the...
I mean, I, I understand that this is a separate issue, but the, the amount that we spend on this investment program really does pale. Kind of in comparison, you know, we, at the moment, the mayor's contingency has gone sixty four thousand over budget. Um, and, you know, the, these, these overall budget, I mean, I know that this is something that we need to discuss in the future, but it, it really is. There really are small, small amounts that are going out at the moment to, um, community and to culture. So, yeah, I do really commend this additional, um, allowance for this, um, this, uh, uh, project. And also considering it actually does, you know, hit all the things that it's applied for and isn't within the timing, thanks.
Councillor Sid.
Just a few statements here, Mr Mayor. One is that, uh, I, as mayor, found the twenty thousand dollars. In the community budget for Weave, um, and I have, so what I have to say is nothing against Weave. But we do have a process, and unfortunately, as far as I know, there is no, there isn't another round this financial year. I just need to clarify if we've got another round or not. There's no other round. So, secondly, so there is no other round to take it from.
Okay, I, I, I'll take it as a question first, to the director of community and culture.
Through you, through you, Mr Mayor, that's correct, there is no, um, further round this financial year.
Thank you.
And, uh, secondly, also, uh, Jodie Tweet, I know we're coming under review, and I also want to foreshadow that I've got some amendments myself, Mr Mayor. But there was a, this, this all came about in the first place because there was an overspend on the mayor's allowance, and so. Uh, councillor officer Jodie Tweet, when she first started, proposed this arts, and we, we agreed to it, and we stuck to it for two years, we were spot on. Um, but the thing is, that when you say, when anyone asks, and I'm not going against Weave, and I know they deserve it, but all, all I'm saying is. That if we as councillors start to promote different amounts of money that aren't, that have been knocked back, and then we say let's include them. It defies the whole purpose of having a process. So you're virtually saying that the people on that panel, which are all members of the community group, I think there's about six or seven. Um, you, you're actually saying that they've got it wrong, and for whatever reason, we're not going to trust them anymore, so there's no point having a panel. There's no point having a grant system because we, we're just going to include, and I'm saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just saying, we're just not going with the panel anymore. Um, so when we're saying, we're not rejecting it as councillors, all I'm saying is, we're not putting any faith in the panel. So there's no point in having a panel, and there's no point in having a grant system if we come up with every now and then, uh, future grants. And as I said, there's no future fund, um, so unfortunately, there's obviously reasons why the panel knocked it back. And it's very unfortunate, but we can't just keep adding money all the time. Yes, I'm finished.
Councillor Sid is finished. Um, councillor Pandefini, you, you have spoken on this. Councillor Pandefini, you have spoken, if you would like to ask a factual question, you can.
I just want to ask Danny a factual question. So you're saying, for you, it, you know, we need to abide by the guidelines and the, you know. What, what the, um, guidelines put out in terms of these applications, that's what you're, just to clarify.
Um, before you answer that, councillor Sid, I'd like to remind all councillors not to engage in a back and forth as it relates to questions. But simply to answer the factual questions as they are to clarify matters, thank you.
I one hundred percent agree with you, and that's why it is one of my amendments actually, but I haven't got there yet.
Thank you. Is there any further debate on the second of councillor Olive's three amendments? There being no further debate, councillor Olive, unless you seek to ask a question, you don't close the debate on an amendment. Okay, thank you, um, I will now, uh, did you accept the amendment? No, I didn't think so, my, my, there's a lot going on, my apologies. Um. Councillor Olive, eh, do you have a question?
Um, to the relevant officer, how much did we spend on the mayor's contingency, uh, tonight when we agreed. Um, to pass that, which was over budget, um, and, you know, sort of how does that compare to the amount that's being asked for here? And, you know, and also, you know, sort of, how can we possibly afford that in, you know, sort of, um, in light of what's been said?
Um, in light of the flow of paper, um, next to me, I, I will give the directors or the general manager the opportunity to respond. If they'd like to take it on notice and come back, because it looks like they're calculating it.
I think it might be about ten thousand dollars.
Yes. It's, it's at the start. They'll take that on notice. Um. Okay, look. Thank, thank, thank you councillors, we can't direct the staff to answer in a particular way, there's been a statement that they will take it on notice while they do that. It's ca- ca- coun- councillor H, thank you, it's unnecessary. Um, we now have councillor Olive's amendment, there being no further debate on the amendment. I will now put the amendment. All those in favour, she did not accept it, no. All those in favour of the amendment moved, Olive Pandefini, raise your hand. Councillor, all those against? I declare the amendment lost. Thank you. Councillor Olive, would you now like to move your next amendment?
Um, uh, yeah, so I would like, I, I would like to, um. Have a removal of, um, changes to the Community Creative Program.
Ju- ju- just, just hold on. Th- thank you councillors, there are hands which are going up. Councillor Olive is moving his amendment. I will hear councillor Olive move his amendment, I'll then call for a seconder. Any queries which you then have, I will then go to that. Councillor Olive, please continue.
Uh, yes, I would like to change it, uh, to the Community Creative Program and reject item number two, Greek A- A- Orthodox Community of New South Wales. A hodger called, uh, Nazariden, which was about three thousand dollars, because it's a re- retrospective payment. And one of the, um, uh, one of the conditions of, you know, uh, ha- submitting an application. Is that it not be retrospective, and so in this particular case, ca- council has gone against, um, its own, um, guidelines. And, uh, put this forward. As was mentioned before by people, you know, so we should stick to the guidelines. Um, and so, uh, I think that this should be taken off the list, the, of, uh, those that were recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pandefini is the seconder. Pandefini is the seconder.
Um, can I ask you a question, Dylan? You were going to provide, um, when we were, Mr Mayor, sorry about that, sorry about that. Um, Mr Mayor, you were going to provide examples, um, in the past when, um, we had gone against the, the guidelines. Because I did ask a question, which, um, was, you know, kind of answered, but, um. Um, it was outlined to us that, that the request was yours to put this back on the paper. Um, and you said that this had happened in the past, so I'm just curious to know if you have, have those examples.
Um, thank you councillor Pandefini. If the manager of community development does not object, are you happy for me to read your response? Yep, so following on from that, um, question and the response which I did provide, I did seek further information from. The manager of community development. Um, I will read it just for the record, Mr Mayor, as discussed and in line. It's, Mr Mayor, as discussed, we haven't funded any retrospective programs before from the CIP, however, we have through the contingency. We have also funded some programs which weren't strict to the guidelines yet in the spirit of the program. For example, additional funds, brackets greater than three thousand to an individual artist, for the COVID era banners, funding to specific ethnic groups. Call if you need anything else. That is the response whi- which I have. Councillor Pandefini, are you satisfied with that? Are there any further questions or clarifications?
Uh, yeah, I guess I just wanted to make a statement. I think that, um, I understand that there have been, um, you know, um. A moving around of the guidelines, but I think that it does actually kind of erode a sense of trust by the applicants. Applications to grant, um, funding, um, is unpaid labor, um, for which the cultural, um. Sector of the community does a lot of, you know, if you are looking at this application, you might not, um. You know, continue with it because, you know, it's out of date or something like that, but then you might see that somebody else has. And I, and I do think that, that there have been instances of this, um, for example, with Create New South Wales, when Don Harwin did go against. The panel's recommendations, it, it created an immense furore amongst the community. Because people, it wasn't obvious, but people did read the papers, and they did see that changes had been made that went against the guidelines. And, and it honestly, it went on for years, and I really don't think that it's the best practice. I understand that it's happened before, I did not realise that, um, but I, I really don't think it's best practice because, and I think it, and it would be very disappointing for people that. Spend a lot of time on their applications, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor H.
Uh, thank you, and look, I'd also like to make, I support this amendment as I have the others. I'd like to make the point that there's this sort of continual reference to sort of guidelines that are sort of just this sort of funny kind of vague guideline. That we may guideline, that we may or may not be required to, uh, adhere to. The, the, the guidelines were actually developed through the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee last term. Yeah, they weren't guidelines. They were eligibility and assessment criteria. It went through a really extensive process with the committee. Uh, and most particularly with the staff members, it was a back and forth process to ensure that community members had a very clear. Explicit set of criteria which they had to meet, which would be transparent, and which would mean that we were applying these consistently. To every applicant. And now we have councillors saying, well, they're not actually, they're actually not criteria, they're guidelines. That is, that has to be called out, that is incorrect, that is actually factually incorrect, and people should not be referring to them as guidelines. This particular item. Is completely contrary to the eligibility, it does not meet in any way the eligibility criteria, and it should not be on here. Because what it means is that we're taking money away from other applicants who do meet the eligibility criteria. And in some cases, they can be quite demanding, you have to be able to provide insurance and a whole bunch of other things, demonstrate, as councillor Pandelfini said. It is a lot of work goes into applying for these grants. I'd also note that in other cases, just responding to councillor Sid's comments, that we're, uh, in tonight and in other instances. Where, um, councillors have called for o- other, uh, applications to be included. It is very clear that they actually did meet the go- the, uh, the eligibility criteria, but for one reason or another, they were pushed aside. Um, and I think it's a real shame that the last one was not included, and I hope there is some way that that other project can be funded. Because I cannot think of anything better that as a council we could do is to get kids involved in the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a point of clarification through to the director of community and culture, could you please identify the title of the document at which these grants are considered?
Um, through you, Miss Mayor, do you mean in terms of the community investment program? Yep, so we're talking about the Community Creative and the, um, Community Connect Investment Streams.
Uh huh, that is correct. And the title of those documents?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor, um, their application and funding guidelines.
Thank you. Um. Thank you. Councillor H.
May I ask the officer to read, uh, further down to the parts that actually refer to the eligibility criteria? And the assessment criteria. May I ask the officer to read that, please?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, it is quite clear that councillor H is correct, their, their criteria, assessment of criteria is within the guidelines that has been set by the council. So, yes, the guidelines, but they are criteria that has been set by a particular group, which council has, has, is supposed to be, um, adhering to.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments?
Um, I just would like to note that I noted in the report as well, that it's actually the Greek Festival of Sydney. And not the Greek Orthodox Community of New South Wales that applied, or, I mean, and I had nothing to do with this. That put in their application, so it should not be the Greek Orthodox Community, it was run under the Greek Festival of Sydney.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? You have a question? Okay, councillor H, your question.
I'd just like to respond to the general manager's, uh.
Is that a question?
It is, I'm responding to his clarification with a question. I would like to ask the general manager if in his opinion, applying, this is a valid question. With it, if it is in his opinion, reading the, uh, eligibility criteria, does this, uh, application merit? Uh, the awarding of a grant, given that it is, does not meet the criteria.
Thanks, Mayor. It's not a matter for me to determine whether it's, uh, meets the merit, that's a panel that does that, and a matter for the elected body to do it. I will make this comment that, um, from a transparency and accountability perspective, I'm very happy the staff have put down that. This, um, particular application has not forced outside the criteria, so I'm happy about that. From a governance perspective, um, I don't think we should have recommended it, that's my view, but I'll talk that to the, talk with that with the staff. At the end of the day, it's a matter for the elected body to make a decision.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now put the amendment. Yep, because we don't accept, we'll now put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. Thank you. We now move to, uh, councillor Sid, you foreshadowed an amendment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it all this one, and I, I'll ask the mover if she'll accept them, but I'll get them all up there first, and I'll explain them. Actually, Mr Mayor, I've asked as a point D.
May we get a division on that last one? I know this is a bit too late, but even, given that it's. Can we get a division?
No. Um, a call for a division needs to be given at the time at which the vote is held. As the chair, at no point in the entirety of my mayoralty, when there's been a call for the division, have I not taken a division? In this instance, we're a fair way away from when the actual vote was held, in light of that, there was no call for a division. Um, councillor Sid, could you please continue?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, what I'm asking for is that the council bring, excuse me, bring back a review of the community investment program of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Including, but limited to the following, a review of the guidelines, and actually, I'm, I may go back to the, the original, I was thinking about it, I tried to soften it, but. I think the review of the guidelines in, with the intent of having a solid policy with actual rules rather than guidelines, and that way there can be no debate. Um, so I might just add those lines, and when you're ready, Mr Kelly. And also, a review of the in-kind allocations. I've noticed in the report that it's not as many people have been asking for the in-kind allocations. And what my intention is, and part of the review, is that I really feel that a lot of not-for-profits, we ask, we charge them the same price we charge anyone else. And then we waive it. So it's really the council charging someone full price, that we're going to waive it anyway, and that becomes a big expense to the whole scheme of things. So to look at the whole idea of not-for-profits and directing them to, if someone asks for the Prince Henry Center, but there's only a group of twenty. We say, look, you can have the Ken- the, uh, Kensington Community Center virtually for free, if you're a non-profit, and. So all these sort of things come into it where we don't be charging, the in-kind contributions, uh, there's nearly fifty thousand dollars worth of in-kind contributions. That can go towards things like Weave and all the rest of the cash contributions, and then we can set up a system where we actually do it, in all fairness, the in-kind contributions. And that can come in the report. Um, also, to look at the annualized donations for the mayor's contingency, it's very hard for the mayor to keep his contingency down. Um, or her, sorry, I said the mayor's, or madam mayor or Mr Mayor. Uh, 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 we, the, 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 the problem is that there's a lot of annual donations in there. One of them being about twenty thousand, twenty something thousand for the helicopter, and you have no say in it. Um, donations to schools, there's one school that gets a lot of donations, um, but there's, so if, uh, what I'm thinking of is in the review, if those could be moved into a separate. But I've got to explain the things, uh, I've just got to explain it so that.
Look, look, I, I will allow councillor Sid to continue to outline the reasons behind.
And then say, yeah, so that, so that moves into a, a separate category altogether. And then ultimately consider funding a dedicated grants officer for the responsible. And then ultimately consider funding a dedicated grants officer for the responsibility of the policy. And that way they explain, and this goes back to people going, when they've lost it, why they've lost it. So they explain the guidelines, the eligibility, they have workshops. If you apply for um through George's River Council, they have workshops. You have interviews with the uh grants officer, they explain where you're up to, um so that you've got the, the criteria. And then ultimately they'll follow up on the final acquittals to make sure the money's gone where it's meant to go. And also um and bring that report back to council. And then also, and there's one left, hold a briefing on the review before the council, the next council meeting.
Um, just in, in relation to, I will go to um councillor Hamilton, just in relation to point E. Is it envisaged that the draft report will be concluded before the next council meeting, so we'll be able to proceed with it? The briefing?
The reason why I've said a briefing is only because if it is coming back to the council meeting, at least we can have a look at it.
No, 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 I, I was just from a staffing perspective. Is it the case that it'll be ready? Through to the relevant? Director?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yes, we can do a briefing to the April council.
Okay, thank you. councillor Hamilton, your question.
My question to the relevant officer, I'm sure the director of community, is consider the funding of a dedicated grants officer, do we already have a dedicated officer to process grants?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Currently, we have an administration and grants officer. Um, and that person performs administration duties for the community development team as well as runs the grants programme. So um part-time, I would say.
Thank you. There is a question from councillor Pandefini.
Apologies, I missed the start of that, but um were you, are you aware of the Arts and Culture Committee and, and would you? You, you created it when you were, when you were the mayor, when you were the mayor? When you were the mayor. Um, would they be involved in this?
C- C- Councillor Veach, it's, it's councillor Veach, it's really not worth it. It's not worth it. Please continue, ca-
I'm sorry, Pandefini, because I don't want to, like, I lied. I didn't create the committee. I created the funding for the creative. We separated, duly divided, separated, and we agreed to it, and we put it through the council.
Okay. Councillor Pandefini, please continue with your question.
Councillor Sed, would you think that people who have um a um expertise in the arts and and culture and the community might be included in this um re kind of jigging of the investment programme?
So that it obviously goes against the whole grants process. That's what I'm trying to get at. This is a grants process. That process is still good, but that process of the committee comes with ideas like the public art, like all the rest of it, which is getting funded. This is a whole different system. This is grant processes for small time. We, we funded a lot of, in the past, uh Clovelly, uh number seven Clovelly Road, because they had exhibitions of sculpture, they had exhibitions of whatever. So we're trying to help artists who were finding it tough through COVID and were funding all their exhibitions. This is only for smaller sort of things. That, what you're talking about, the way I see it, we've already started to fund it, is for public art, public art spaces and, and individuals. But at all, this is a grant system. So if you want to help them with the grant, feel free.
Okay, just, just, just before we do, what I'm actually going to do is I'm going to call for a second on the amendment first. We have a second for the amendment from councillor Sed. Sec. Sec- second, but do you, do you accept it, councillor Hamilton?
I, I do actually accept it because I think that the, that councillor Sed has made some good points. And considering the fact that he is advocating for a dedicated grants officer. And I don't see why we would at all reject that. That sounds like a fantastic idea.
Thank you. In light of the fact that it has now been incorporated into the amendment, into the motion as moved, um is there any further debate on the motion? Okay, councillor, can I just confirm? Okay, so councillor Sed moved an amendment. Councillor Hamilton has accepted that amendment, and it has been incorporated into the motion, which reads in councillor, Mr Kelly, if you go, A, approve the community connect funds, B, approve the community creative funds, C, notice the status of the contingency fund, D, enhance the community investment programme by providing assistance and feedback to worthy but unsuccessful mister or misdirected applicants. They have an opportunity to resubmit at a later date with a better understanding. D, E, bring back a re- a report to council or a review to council of the community investment programme, uh including uh points I, well, one, two, three and four. Ye- yes, and F, holding a briefing on the review before the next council meeting. Councillor Pandefini, you have a further question?
So um my question is, and I just want to, before I ask the question, I just want to say one thing. There is an Arts and Culture Committee made up from, of artists and people within the cul- like cultural sector, you know, experts, et cetera, um who meet for a committee that we've invited them to. They put in applications, they were invited, they, we meet. Um, and we ask their view and use their expertise. Okay, so it's a big committee, there's twenty people. Um, sorry, can I just speak?
So coun- councillors, uh it, just, just hold on. Thank you.
So that's just, just want to put that. My question is, it feels to me a little bit disrespectful that that committee is not being included in the review that you have drafted. And just the other point I'd like to make is that we are meeting next week or the week after with the intention of reviewing the grant application processes and programme, which was in, an item set back in November twenty twenty-two. So I just would like to ask you to add, you know, with respect, add that acknowledgement of their um participation into this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Hamilton has now the mover of the motion. It, it is a question, is directed to councillor Hamilton. If I'm correct, it is that, are you willing to include the consultation of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee as it relates to the review of the community investment programme? Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, uh.
Is that an amendment?
N- no, it was a question. It, 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 a question by a rather circuitous route, but it was a question. There being no further speakers, councillor Hamilton to close the debate.
No further comments, thank you.
Thank you. I will now put the, uh, the, I will now put the motion as moved and then amended by councillor Hamilton. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. Okay. Uh, CC two slash twenty-three Knox Night Sculpture Walk twenty twenty-three, funding allocation carryover challenged by councillor Veach. Councillor Veach, could you please uh outline what it is that you are moving, if you are in fact moving anything?
Uh, yes, I have um sent through an amendment to Mr Kelly, please. So this would replace the recommendation uh that's on the business papers. Uh, it's, it's not too different. Um, it's that we endorse as per the first part, the uh a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be carried over in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. For future arts projects and or arts infrastructure, I note that uh hopefully in the near future, the uh Randwick Stables, for example, will be dedicated to us, with these other projects, for example, the town hall and so on. Um, that we refer the matter to uh the director of community and culture and the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee for consideration at the April meeting. Uh, and receive a report no later than the August twenty-three uh ordinary council meeting. It's a significant amount of money. Knox is a very particular programme. It's contemporary art uh produced by uh students. Um, it's electronic art, it's sustainable art. It's also public art. Um, it's a very unique event. And it's not often, it's a shame, I'm very disappointed that it's not going ahead this year. But for the arts budget, this is a really significant amount of money. Uh, it may be a drop in the ocean for some of the other projects uh that we fund. Uh, but we need to consider this very carefully. Um, and you know, there are various events that could go in this. Maybe some, maybe ten thousand dollars could come out of this to go to the Weave Kids, for example. Maybe some of it could go towards um uh the removable walls in town hall for exhibitions. You know, maybe some of it could go to the Randwick uh Stables refurbishment. There's a whole bunch of uh worthy projects that it could be used for. And I think the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee would be well placed to consider this uh and help inform a report back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by councillor Sed. Is there any further, sorry, seconded by councillor Sed. Councillor Sed is the second.
Just, just, actually, Mr Mayor, this is exactly what I was trying to say before. There are other vehicles rather than the grants to sponsor the uh arts committee, and this is the perfect vehicle, and I commend you for the motion.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Pandefini.
I would also like to commend um Philippa's amendment. We have had a lot of money. Um, you know, it's fantastic that we are um putting money into public art, and we've got a fantastic public art project coming up on Heffron. But um to me, yeah, this amount of money can go a long way um in, you know, arts budgets are very small. Um, I would note um the line on this um report that unfortunately, due to insufficient numbers of students signing up to the UNSW Art and Design Course, um that is a reflection of the state of the arts at the moment. It is unaffordable uh for many artists to contribute. Um, there is a significant amount of research, um of which I've been a part of with Melbourne University in Melbourne, uh looking at why uh the creative sector um isn't uh flourishing and why young artists are unavailable. I would also point to the uh applications in the um creative community grant allocations. There is not an individual artist in there. There is not one individual artist who has applied to put on an exhibition in this LGA. There is not one, it is, you know, the infamous line, it is easier to have an exhibition at Long Bay Jail than it is to have an exhibition in Randwick Council anywhere. So these amounts of money can go a very, very long way to ensuring that um we can uh actually start to see some arts and culture happen uh i- uh in the grassroots level. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Veach, do you wish to close the debate? There being no further speakers, and I'll put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. CC three slash twenty-three at McEwan Street Plaza, six month trial period in review, moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
It just says per the recommendations. Um, I've, I've got a lot of positive committee feedback about the, the trial. Um, a lot of people uh have told me it's really improved the area uh and uh the facade of the area, and they really enjoy going down uh and, and spending time either, either at the plaza or one of the, the neighboring cafes. Um, I've had feedback myself from a few of the businesses that are, are very positive about it. And hence I fully support this recommendation uh to extend it um and uh and uh by a month, and we come back next month and, and talk further.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton is the second.
I reserve my right.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, C, uh, actually, hold on. Uh, we now move to, actually councillors, do we want a two-minute break? Just a bathroom break? Um, I might, uh. C- C- Councillors, we're going to adjourn for five minutes for a particular purpose. Thank you. Ca- ca- councillors, we're going to adjourn for five minutes for a particular purpose. Thank you. Councillor Nielsen, will you? Okay, that's fine. Would you like us to wait? That's fine. Uh, thank you. I now reopen the Randwick Council meeting at ten thirty-two P M. Uh, we move to motions pursuant to notice, beginning with N M sixteen slash twenty-three. Notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, resident parking scheme at Fenton Avenue, Marubra. Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor Hay. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please speak to your motion?
Yes, um, so basically, I, I do support the introduction firstly to say of uh limited parking, restricted parking on Fenton Avenue, just for those who are not familiar with the area. Um, part of Fenton Avenue uh is now two-hour parking, and that's the angled parking on the eastern side. Part of it is thirty-minute parking, there's part that's unlimited. I have, however, been contacted by a couple of residents who live nearby uh on that street and Chapman Avenue just off there, who basically have limited parking at their residence and have more registered vehicles than they do have uh um, um, the parking spots. Thank you, councillor McCafferty. Uh, and they've asked whether council will consider a residence parking scheme uh for them, so they're able to park near their residences. So I'm introducing that motion to council.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes, seconded.
Is that my right?
Thank you. Councillor Veach.
Um, I just have a question through to the relevant officer. Isn't timed parking the same as a resident parking scheme?
Through, through to.
Well, it's the idea that residents are able to buy, if they're eligible, um able to uh purchase a, a re- uh, you know, a resident parking permit to park, have unlimited parking in the timed.
Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the council must embark on a residential parking um survey scheme to uh get the, the scheme adopted, uh and then um issue uh applicant, oh sorry, issue uh the certificates or stickers subsequent to that.
There is a follow-up question from councillor Veach. I then have a hand up from councillor Chapel. Councillor Veach.
Um, yeah, and again, I'm happy to support the motion, but I'm just trying to clarify, is there an ability for the residents who are there to purchase at the moment a parking permit to park in these timed areas?
To the Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, not at this stage. A, a scheme needs to be um implemented through the traffic committee.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question is uh twofold. One, um, it, the motion relates primarily to Fenton Avenue, but the mover mentioned Chapman Avenue. Um, and I suppose through to the mover whether you would see this report as including Chapman. Um, and then secondary uh to that, um, I suppose when we do this, do we have um differential override so that, for instance, it would be permanent in a two-hour zone, but say not in the thirty-minute zone where we are encouraging high turnover of spots?
Okay, uh, for the first question, um, it's more the eastern side of Chapman Avenue because um those residents who live there often do park on, or did park on Fenton Avenue before it was restricted uh to, to two hours in some areas and thirty uh minutes in others. So it's more the eastern side of Chapman Avenue. Uh, because I had one resident in Chapman Avenue and one resident in Fenton Avenue uh reached out, so that's my answer.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Sedd. Councillor Sedd.
Oh, yes, I, I want the, uh, I asked for the report to um get feedback on as far as resident uh parking scheme for both the thirty-minute and the two-hours, because uh they're, they're basically uh two areas where the um, uh, their uh residents are wanting to park. Um, so if the report comes back on both of them, please.
Thank you. Councillor Sedd.
The question to the relevant officer, I, I, I'm in favour of the, the motion, but usually, especially when we did this up at Coogee, this seemed to come from nowhere. Obviously, I had a lot of complaints as well from people saying one minute I could park there and the next day I'm getting booked, and someone got booked three times because they never knew there was a sign there. Um, usually we actually do implement a resident parking scheme, but it sort of came from nowhere. Is this only temporary while McKean Street, or it's gonna stay? And if it stays, then this really does need to happen as fast as possible.
Thank you. Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this was originally as a result of the McKean Street Plaza um works. So we'll introduce the resident parking scheme, uh, post that.
Are there any further speakers? I have a question for the Director of City Services. Can I ask when the last time that region was surveyed for a resident parking scheme?
So you're through, through yourself, Mr. Mayor, I have to take that on notice.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Rosenfeld to close the debate.
I reserve my right.
Thank you. Uh, I'll now put it. All those in favour? Those against, declare that carried. We now move to N M seventeen slash twenty-three. Notice of motion from councillor Veach, assistance for Wives at the Randwick Environment Park. Okay, so just. Hold on. Councillor Veach as the mover, do I have a seconded? Seconded by councillor Sedd.
I just note that uh since submitting this motion, there was quite a lot of chewing and throwing. I found, I found myself at the point where I had to put a motion up. Uh, however, subsequent to the motion being published on the business papers, I've received written confirmation that thi- this is now being implemented, so I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Veach. N M eighteen slash twenty-three. Notice of motion from councillor Olive, evaluating the need for an additional position within the bushland bush care unit. Councillor Olive, uh, is there a seconded? Seconded by councillor Sedd. Councillor Olive.
Uh, yeah, first of all, I'd like to uh thank council staff for the information provided in questions with notice at our last meeting. That information is used as the basis uh for this particular motion. Um, uh, the motion says that uh, yeah, council officers bring back a report to council evaluating the need for an additional bush care officer or other position within the bush care unit. Um, while, you know, sort of the um, uh, the bush, well, the number aspect to, to the bush care unit in, before two thousand and um uh thirteen, there were four members of the bush care unit, that was reduced to three. Now, um, there is a, so the, the three that are there are supervisor, a bushland officer, and a bush care officer. Um, the funding of the bush care unit, um, uh, in, since, between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-two, uh, has uh increased by seven percent, yet the CPI has increased by fourteen percent. So uh prima facie, there has been a real reduction in funding to the bush, uh, the bush care unit. So, um, uh, this, you know, sort of, um, uh, uh means that, um, uh, that, you know, sort of, uh, it's the funding of the bush care unit and uh is something to be looked at, particularly in light of the additional responsibility. As part of the uh questions we've noticed last time, um, uh, it, it was noted uh in the, in the response by um, um, council officers that, um, uh, there's been an increase in the quantity and complexity of bushland sites managed and man- maintained by the team. And it also includes that there's an increase in the number of um volunteer bush care groups. Um, given that there is only, you know, sort of, uh, the same number of um, of bush care offices uh within the uh, the particular group, but there's been an increase in the number of volunteer groups. This also increases the additional responsibility. So we have two situations, a pincer movement of, you know, reduced real, real funding plus increased responsibility and difficulty. Um, there are, there are, um, uh, with, uh, the bush care team, you know, sort of operates in sort of in a range of ways, but includes um, the um, the use of uh contractors to actually uh be involved in things such as weeding. But also, you know, sort of, uh, on, uh, additional to that are the volunteer bush care groups, and there are fourteen, fourteen of these. Um, uh, now, you know, sort of, uh, we have to look at, you know, sort of, um.
What, what, two minutes?
Okay.
But we had leniency before.
Thank you. Okay, hold on. Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld has correctly identified that we have surpassed two minutes. I'm feeling generous. Councillor Olive, could you please? Councillor Olive, could you please begin to conclude your remarks?
Uh, I would just say that the leniency was given before, but, you know, anyway. Um, yeah, okay, so, you know, sort of, um, uh, given that it, those, those additional, you know, sort of, uh responsibilities of the existing and sort of, um, uh, on the, uh, the existing bush care team, and, you know, sort of, uh, the benefits of having, you know, sort of, um, additional, an additional member on that team would be something like that you, they would be able to run more volunteer bush care groups. The volunteer bush care, care groups, um, their modus operandi is to hand weed, uh weed, whereas, you know, contractors are, you know, sort of, uh, will, you know, sort of use, um, uh fertilizers, um sprays and things of, of that nature. So, you know, sort of, if we increase the, uh, the, the logic here, it seems the logic is increasing the number of, um, uh, uh, bush care, um, um, members of the bush care team, um, increasing the number of volunteer groups might have a flow-on effect of, you know, sort of, um, having, you know, sort of, uh, uh, more weeding, less spraying, um, more community buy-in, and, you know, sort of, something like the Friends of Malabar Headland Group are, you know, it's an example of where you've got huge community buy-in. It's a, a group that's been going thirty-seven years. If we can kind of foster that kind of, um, uh devotion to keeping our, our environment sustainable, then we'll have done a good job. So I, I recommend this to you, bring back a report.
Councillor Sedd is the seconded. Waves is right. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? Those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to N M nineteen slash twenty-three from councillor Olive, report outlining green investment strategies. Uh, before you begin, I'd like to remind all councillors of the procedural motion limiting speaking times to two minutes. Councillor Olive.
All right, uh, once again, I would like to thank council staff for providing the information, you know, sort of, uh, um, at, at the last council meeting, uh, which forms the basis of, of this particular um motion. Um, the, the crux of the motion is council officers bring back a report, uh, uh, bring a report back to council.
Sorry, councillor Olive, can I disinterrupt? Councillors, tha- thank you. There is, councillors, councillors speaking, they should be heard and listened to in silence, including not taking photographs in the chamber. Councillor Olive, please continue.
Uh, council officers bring back a report, uh, to council, outlining strategies that had reduced the dollar proportion of fossil fuel-related investments in council's financial portfolio. Um, we've just heard, you know, sort of, from the uh Intergovernmental Panel, Panel on Climate Change, how um dire the situation is uh for the world at the moment in uh the, in um the uh, in terms of, you know, sort of, our, um, uh, the amount of greenhouse gases that, you know, sort of are accumulating in our environment and the catastrophic uh consequences of that for our planet. Um, we, they say that we have to do something immediately. Um, and I think that, you know, sort of residents i- in our community have had this brought home to them uh in a real way by, you know, floods and fires we've had in, uh, in recent times. And also, you know, sort of, they, the community expects council to be doing something about it, not just being a bystander. And council have been working very well. They have been, you know, sort of, um, uh, producing, um, uh, they, they have been providing subsidies for renewables. Um, they are on a programme of, um, uh, of, of, um, rolling out um, electric vehicle chargers, um, uh, they, uh, um, let me see, um, yeah, that have, council have a purchasing power agreement, you know, sort of for renewables, and that's been all part of their programme. But one area which they've been let down in is uh investments. That council has only about, you know, sort of, eighteen percent of investments which are in um non-fossil fuel uh that we're sure about are in non-fossil fuel investments. Uh, but when we look at, you know, some other councils, we can see that, you know, sort of, uh, for example, if we look at the Inner West forty-seven percent, um, uh, Waverley thirty-nine percent, Hornsby twenty-five percent. Um, the Randwick Council has eighty-two percent are in fossil fuel or the other part we don't know.
Okay.
So, uh, we don't rate highly as far as, uh, other councils are concerned. We, we have no investments in um socially responsible investments. We don't invest in government bonds, in uh, um, uh T Corp. Uh, these are things that we could start looking at, and, you know, sort of, uh, I've outlined there, you know, sort of, um, uh, what we do invest in and what we don't invest in. And I think a report should be brought back, um, so that we can, you know, sort of have a financial stocktake uh and improve our position as far as, you know, sort of fossil fuel investment is concerned.
Thank you. Councillor Veach, you're the seconded. Okay, thank you. As the seconded.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I fully support this report. It's a very detailed, very thoughtful, uh, and informative, uh, report uh from councillor Olive. I'd really urge councillors to vote for this. Um, the Greens have actually been pushing for, uh, for this type of, uh, move and divestment for, for many years. Councillor Mattson uh championed this for many years, I think even since before I was on council. Uh, others may be able to confirm that. So it's something we've been trying to do for a very, very long time. Uh, and I'd note with the, uh, recent endorsement of, um, the safeguard mech- mechanism, uh, that, uh, fossil fuel companies, uh, share prices are rapidly losing value. And there are reports on that in the news today. These types of shares are going to drop in value as we start moving uh towards renewable energy and putting, uh, hard caps on emissions. We don't want to be left, uh, in a situation where our investment portfolio starts to tank. I mean, we should be voting on this, uh, for the right reasons, because we should no longer be investing in fossil fuels. That is in line with our uh endorsement of the climate emergency declaration in twenty nineteen. However, if that's not something you subscribe to, uh, at the very least, consider that these types of investments uh may well expose council to a significant drop in the value of our investment portfolio. Um, there are alternatives which councillor Olive has very clearly, uh, noted here and that our staff, uh, should be, uh, looking at bringing a report to us. So I really urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Exactly two minutes. Thank you, councillor Veach. Are there any further speakers? Councillor D'Souza.
Today, we have four green councillors elected to Randwick City Council. Never in the history of this council have we had so many green councillors. And it appears those councillors who were resistant to accept climate science have been replaced by climate warriors. I am not a Green. I'm an independent council, but I don't need to be a Green to prosecute the case to address climate change. Because the world scientific community has spoken, and they have given us up. Because the world scientific community has spoken and they have given us our prognosis. If we do not act together to decrease our carbon emissions and address climate change, we will surely perish. Climate change is real, my friends, and this is the most urgent of times and the most urgent of challenges. We have to address this challenge with honesty and courage. And that's why I'll be supporting this notice of motion, well done, council.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? Councilor Haye.
I'd like to ask a question through the mayor of the relevant officer. Um, we were all involved in a budget strategy and, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, what sort of financial implications would have on the budget if it were, uh, done in the next, um, in the next financial year? And would that threaten, uh, our ability to, uh, pass a surplus?
Through to the, through to the Director of Corporate Services.
Um, the motion is asking for a report, so it's unable to answer that question until we actually conduct the analysis into producing the report.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, Council Olive to close the debate. Thank you, we'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? There's been a request for a division. Okay. Councilor Pandafini, Councilor Nielsen, there has been a request for a division, all those in favour? Counselor Pandafini, Nielsen, Veitch, Chapel, Olive, Wilson, Sedd, D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? Hamilton, Haye, Luxford, Rosenfeld, McCafferty and Burst, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Uh, N M twenty slash twenty-three, notice of motion from c- c- councillors, thank you, thank you councillors. Councillors, thank you, notice of motion twenty slash twenty-three from Councilor Hamilton investigating ways to improve development application processing, processing times. Moved Councilor Hamilton, seconded Councilor Burst. Uh, Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you. I understand council is currently undertaking review of their DA service. Uh, however, I've received so many emails over the five years I've been on council, requests, cries for help, anything that residents could possibly say over email and even over phone conversations and in person. Um, to express their frustration at the times it takes to process development applications. And so in light of the fact that I have received so many of these requests and pleas for help, I've put this motion for, to, uh, council and I hope I get your support. That council investigate ways to improve development application processing times. And further that council staff bring back to council a report on options. So what are the options to improve processing times? And what improvement initiatives, they might be underway, they might be, um, in ideation phase. Could you share those with us? And projected improvements to council within three months of this, um, meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Burst is the second with the motion.
I reserve the right.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Veitch, then Counselor Chapel, then Counselor Sedd.
Uh, thank you, I just have a question through to the relevant officer. Um, am I correct in my understanding that there is a statutory limit on what can be charged for development, uh, processing development applications? I may be incorrect, but that was what I've been led to understand in the past. And does Randwick Council, uh, do, what is our position in terms of costs in relation to processing development applications? Are we running at a loss, are we at a cost, cost neutral or are we actually generating revenue from processing development applications?
Through to the Director of City Planning.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, council has a maximum statutory fee that it can only charge. Um, so we can't really go beyond that. There is some discretion in other fees just relating to, um, notification exhibition, for example. But the predominant fee is a statutory fee that we can't go beyond. Um, so council, um, doesn't, it's a subsidised, um, service. Um, the cost of processing development locations is well in excess of what it costs council to provide the service.
Follow-up question from Councilor Veitch.
Um, again through to the relevant officer, I don't know if this is something you can answer, uh, this evening or would have to be on notice. But what, uh, how much does council receive in income from development application fees as opposed to the actual costs of processing them?
Through to the Director of City Planning.
Uh, thank you, Smell, I'll have to take that one on notice, but, um, certainly in terms of DA fee revenue, it's approximately around the one point two million.
Thank you, um, I will, before I go to Counselor Chapel, I just have a query, um, to the relevant officer. Um, I recall that council used to have reported to it DA waiting times. Um, and I don't recall seeing one in recent years. And I could just clarify if that is still the practice of council and I'm just confused. Um, or, or, or what decision of council sought to discontinue that?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, the KPIs for the DA, um, team in terms of the processing applications , um, gets reported with the quarterly, um, uh, operational plan reports?
Thank you, um, Counselor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, I don't oppose, um, the, the thrust of the amendment of just, uh, of the motion. I've just, um, sent through to Mr Kelly a very brief amendment to it, um, which I think would bring back information that is um, more useful to council, which is just that it would be good to have, um, the relevant, uh, timelines split apart by compliant and non-compliant development. Because I think we have a reasonable expectation that compliant development or development that is consistent with our planning controls is, is processed within a certain amount of time. But where there are significant over height or floor space differences, um, I think there's necessarily going to be a lag and I think we, we wouldn't want to complicate, um, the data we get out by, by lumping those together.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Sedd.
Mr Mayor, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the motion and I actually am happy with the councillor because it's nowhere, in no way having, uh, a go at the, uh, planners. It's actually only asking that maybe if we could look outside the square. I too am getting those phone calls, admittedly, there's obviously hundreds of applications and we only hear from the people that have been delayed. But I am getting people ringing me up, uh, for reasons that they've waited two hundred days, three hundred days. And it's usually because someone's on holidays or something else, so it's not fault of their own. So obviously we hear from, um, only the bad news that I heard today that someone has also left, another planner is leaving. Um, so I admire, as I said, I admire the councillor, it's just looking at ways that we can improve it and ways that, I think years ago we were going to have electronic DAs and it was going to save the world, but it really hasn't made any difference whatsoever. And now the CDCs, a lot of people are going to CDCs and it still hasn't, uh, made our DAs any faster. So it actually is a very good notion that, uh, we really do need to just work something outside the square and maybe not necessarily employ more people, but just to do something to make it quicker efficiencies.
A question from Counselor Hamilton, after that I'll go to Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer. I just, just clarifying that, sorry, I can't see it, I can see it here. And would it make a difference, because what I'm requesting and what, what residents are requesting is could there be an improvement in the processing times? Would it make a difference or should it make a difference between compliant and non-compliant development?
Through to the General Manager.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, council's just trying to understand Counselor Chapel's, um, proposed, uh, addition here is that the majority of applications that come in from, um, applicants are non-compliant, otherwise they would do compliant development. Consistently, so the, the majority, um, that would come in would be outside of the planning controls that council has, especially the DCP controls. And that's where the staff, um, try to find compromises to resolve those particular issues. And it could be a setback issue, it could be, um, a slight increase in height or whatever those particular issues are. So, um, if they're complying developments, they're normally, uh, um, a compliant development. And they normally go through a different path, which actually don't come through the council, they, they advertise and that. So I think that, I think what you're after is where there's, after discussions with the, with the particular applicants, we just can't get a resolution of a particular matter, uh, those particular ones where they may end up, you know, the council refuses them or they go to Land and Rural and Court. Uh, is that the type of application we're talking about, that's the distinction?
Okay, yep. Thank you. Counselor Hamilton.
Uh, could we change the wording to reflect what you've just agreed to, the advice from the GM? So, um, I think the wording that I heard was distinguish between those going through CDC, is that correct?
Can I ask the General Manager to su- suggest a form of wording to be incorporated into Counselor Hamilton's motion?
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor, and please, Counselor Chapel, correct me if I've misinterpreted this. Um, so the report, uh, the report that we would look at is for those applications that the applicant, um, does not change their particular, um, development. And as a result of that, it's, uh, recommended for a refusal by the council staff because they're not in accordance with the council policies that have been taken, undertaken under a merit assessment.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'll accept that, I think that's a, a fair, fair comment.
Um, are there any further speakers? Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, my concern is that, um, whatever changes or amendments that we are proposing, we have to ensure that the interest in the, of the applicant and the object are, are balanced. It shouldn't be seen to be pushing something through to make things so much easier for the applicant and therefore the neighbours are going to find it much more difficult to put in their, we've got to make sure it's fair. So we, I'm just making sure that we understand that in what we're setting out here. And I guess the other thing that's really important is that any changes must ensure that all development applications are subject to appropriate but thorough processing time. To ensure councils, to ensure confidence that council's approval process is rigorous and the outcome can stand up to scrutiny in the courts. So, you know. You're understanding, that's what we're going to get back in the report, yes, yeah, okay, yep.
Okay. Counselor Olive?
Uh, yeah, I just have a, have a question that, you know, sort of, um, it says in the background, council is currently undertaking a review of the DA service, um, my glass. Um, the, the DA service, uh, um, is that, is that the case at the moment? And does that incorporate any of the motion, uh, any of the, um, action points of the motion?
Through to the General Manager.
Thank, thank you, Smell, um, councillors, certainly one of the things that I'll be, I'm talking to the director, not the director about, uh, was when I had the one-on-one interviews with the councillors, was raised a number of times by different councillors on how we can actually improve the, our processes to see how we can actually find, uh, ways to still balance the community needs while improving our DA processing times.
Okay, so it's not something, it's established at the moment that we're doing, you know, sort of, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, there being no further speakers, Counselor Hamilton to close the debate. Thank you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to confidential items, I will go to the, uh, go to the Thank you. Thank you. Can I just confirm that we are now back in public session and recording? Thank you. I will now read the outcomes of the confidential items. CP5/23, appointment of additional expert members for the Realmond Local Planning Panel was carried. CC4/23, tender for production of printing equipment was deferred and carried. CS12/23, J C Deco, contract for provision of maintenance of street furniture deed of variation was carried in an amended fashion. CO17/23, tender for the provision of line marking services for SS Rock was carried. The supplementary confidential business item, CP6/23, was carried. Thank you, councillors. There being no further business. At 11:26, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you. It's the first time we ever needed an extension.